Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting, Tuesday, September 17th, 6:30 PM. The call of hearing room. First order of business is public comment, if there is any. Seeing none, we'll go to our scheduled appointments, starting with Jason Malinowski, Public Safety Building Committee Chair. Update on Public Safety Building project. Mr. Malinowski.
Good evening. It's nice to be here and actually have a building that we can go into and occupy. So it's been a long road. Many of you have been on the board or other committees during the process, but we definitely see the end of the light, end of the tunnel here. And having the departments being in the building for two weeks is definitely a step, you know, in the right direction that some of us didn't know when that would ever happen. So what I thought I would do tonight with the presentation is kind of provide a little bit of a timeline of where we've been and where we're going, and also where we stand on kind of the proverbial question we usually get of where you at on project cost. As we've messaged throughout the project, it's a really good story, but we're really in the final stretch here. Some of the unknowns have become knowns, and we have, you know, much better guidance that we can provide to those questions. So I wanted to start, obviously you're all very well aware of who represents the town, you know, through the committee, entirely volunteer committee, but if you kind of look at the names on the list, I can't compliment you more on the dedication that these folks have put in. You know, not only has the Public Safety Building Committee, many sat on the Public Safety Study Committee. One was a selectman. One was on advisory at the time we were going through kind of the pitch of the project. And some of you sitting up there sat on a facilities committee 15 years ago trying to make this happen. So just wanted to thank, you know, the entire committee for what they have done to bring this to fruition. Any of you that kind of monitored our meetings over time, just the utmost respect amongst all nine members throughout the process. While we didn't always agree on every decision that was made or every motion that was made, there was always a general, a very strong general sense of direction of where we were going, and we were all very united on that front. So I just wanted to thank all of them for joining me on this voyage that we've been on in working so collaboratively as a team. So where I'm just going to kind of walk you through tonight is current project status, special acknowledgements, summary of what we've done over these two years, the goals we've achieved, where we're at on cost, and just kind of some next steps on where we're going to go before our term expires at the end of June, and a few very small requests of all of you. Where we're at is the police officially opened and began operating out of the building on September 3rd. The fire department started their move the following day and officially started operations on September 5th. There continues to be a punch list ongoing that they are tackling at a pretty feverish pace. As many of you probably have noticed as you've driven by the facility, you know, landscaping work continues but is getting to the point of substantially complete in that area as well. When we kind of look at, you know, now you're starting to use a facility, things break, things don't work as envisioned, things don't always, you know, come to reality of what we thought we were going to get. But I think overall, the feedback has been very positive. When I have talked to both chiefs, the general word I've heard more often than not is the word awe of their new working conditions. You know, both departments are obviously working in facilities that were far outdated. So, you know, it's great to kind of see that reaction now that we're at the finish line. I think, given how much we've put into this project, we're not satisfied with, you know, any issues outstanding. So I think what I would point out is things that we're working through that, one is a more public item, one is, you know, more behind-the-scenes thing, is we all knew the driveways were not going to be the easiest to navigate. It was the biggest limitation of using that site in that area due to the conservation restrictions in the culvert that exists in that area, as well as the public water supplies. So while we have done our best to put public service announcements out there with SAM, it's still a work in process. The chiefs are monitoring it, and we may choose to make some corrections down the road, or we may just kind of wait this out, right? Instead of reacting to two weeks of using a driveway and just see what comes of it. So I guess my one request of anyone in the public watching this is just have some patience with it. Follow the traffic pattern that we've outlined. And to the extent you find yourself on the wrong side of the driveway, I think anyone that has done that thus far has been able to successfully navigate themselves out of there. So, you know, just remember it is a public safety facility and drive at a very slow rate, and you'll be fine.
Remember, I posted the video.
The video is posted on all the town's social media websites, the town website, as well as Southborough Access Media. I believe both the police and fire departments have posted it in their various domains as well. And I know it continuously kind of gets recycled out there. But again, we continue to monitor it, and if anyone has any constructive ideas of, you know, I've already gotten many folks in town with some ideas, some more palatable than others, we'll certainly listen and continue to monitor. It will be an agenda item for us as we go forward. Colin, and then, you know, to an lesser extent, in terms of major items we're still kind of working through is, and we knew this would be an issue as well, is, you know, you're moving into a 35,000-square-foot building in kind of a changing season. So the H-track balancing has been something that has been worked through. I think the particular issues are in the firefighter sleeping quarters have been a little hotter than expected, but again, folks are adjusting to their new home, and the contractor is doing what they're supposed to be doing. I think anyone that's dealt with these issues before knows that that's probably a very known issue with building a building of this size, and, you know, we're not surprised by that one, at least. So that's kind of where we're at. It's always dangerous when you thank people, but I thought it was really important to kind of run down this list and make sure that the town, and especially all of you, understand what people have been doing behind the scenes that will never be apparent when you walk through the facility, drive by the facility, go up the access road, et cetera. And I just wanted to quickly highlight some of the contributions that some folks have made, and I'll try to be as brief as possible, but it really goes to the overall spirit of what you pitched, those of you that were on the Board of Selectmen, what we pitched as a prior Public Safety Study Committee to the public. So obviously, the board is currently constituted, but all of the members that sat next to you or with you in the past, I mean, your support and trust in our committee has been paramount to the success. You've trusted and given us guidance where we needed it, but also kind of left us to do what you asked us to do. And I think the support that you've shown us, but also the support that you did to kind of help advocate for this project, start to finish, really goes to show your overall support of the public safety community. Mark Purple, as town administrator, you know, could have just been hands-off and said we had a committee. Mark definitely got his steps in going back and forth to that facility every day. You know, he put in a lot of effort to kind of help validate thinking on certain issues. And if I sat here and walked you through the fire drills, no pun intended, that we had throughout this project, you know, that could have had significant financial costs to the town, but significant operational impact to the buildings and the function that we intended of them, I think, you know, Mark was a key part of the success in resolving a lot of those and acting as a good sounding board for myself as the chair, the other committee members, but also the owner's project manager, to kind of work through some of the issues. And part of the reason we're going to be in the financial situation that we're in is because of the sound decision-making that occurred throughout the process, and Mark was a critical part of that. Chief Paulus, I think he said it best when we opened the building last week. You all that were sitting on the board hired him, promised, you know, there would be a new facility someday, that, you know, the effort that he put in to bring this thing forward to town meeting, but also to completion, is really a testament to both him and his department of where we're at. Chief Achilles, only been here four months, but dealt with some big issues right upon joining us, and his poise and the trust that he built within his department to resolve some of those couldn't be commended anymore. Chief Morrow, obviously was a key part of kind of designing and outfitting what would be the future vision of the fireside. You know, his effort right up until his last day, even when he was in the interim role, you know, we can't thank him enough. And then, what you don't see is, the police and fire departments had various committees over time that, you know, had inputs into the gym areas, or the furniture, or various aspects of the building. They weren't getting paid for that. They were coming to our meetings, they were doing stuff on their own time, really just a true teaming of, you know, them helping us to reach, you know, kind of all of our common goal. It's not too often you thank the people you pay, but, you know, the town did pay a lot of money to Vertex, Context, and CTA as our owner's project manager, designer, and general contractor. But when you think about the tone of where we're at, and that we have no contentious issues left, there's nothing that's really under protest at this point. The principal of CTA, the general contractor, made a reference in a meeting we had earlier today that Mark and I were in, that he's never been in a project where the amount of money at contention at the end was such a small percentage of the overall total contract. And that really goes to show you how they all work together. There was definitely infighting along the way, but, you know, we all worked as a team to accomplish the common goal. Can't say enough about Vertex and our owner's project manager, especially Bill Nangle, who was kind of our onsite rep. He was really the glue that kind of brought it all together. And then our design team, I think anyone drives by the building, I haven't heard anyone say they don't like the look of the building, so I think that goes a long way, and they've been with us for four and a half years through this process, the ups and the downs. Finance team, so moving more towards the townhouse and the town employees, Brian and Heidi. There's a lot of financial components that go into this in terms of what I'm going to report up to you, in terms of how this impacts the tax bills, that's obviously Brian's role. And then Heidi, working through a contract that basically was awarded under three different warrant articles in terms of, we had the public safety building, the land acquisition, we had the CPC component for the golf, and then we had the separate golf article to fix the clubhouse. There's a lot of inner workings and keeping everyone honest, I think, you know, kudos to all of them. Karen has been instrumental throughout in terms of just thinking through signage, driveway access, tree clearing, what's the future look like, how are we going to plow this building? There's just a lot of things that went into logistics that we'll now see the benefits of as we operate out of there. I really have to pause with Tom, not to take anything away from anyone else on this list, but he wired the building essentially himself in terms of getting the IT equipment up and running all the wireless access points, making sure all the software was talking to each other, dealing with the chiefs and radio connectivity. That's not in his contract. I haven't looked at it, but I can almost guarantee you, starting up a brand-new building basically by yourself from a technology perspective, and there's a lot of inner workings of technology that's unique to that building that you wouldn't experience up here. I just really wanted to make sure that his efforts were commended. He had some very late nights there, you know, and obviously had a daytime job to deal with as well. You know, Lori, in her role as building commissioner, coming in pretty late in the project, but helping to think strategically through issues of how to make sure we had the most code-compliant building, but also providing a practical lens in terms of how the building was going to be used, I think, was paramount to some of the decisions that were made along the way. And then John Perrin, at the end, obviously will have a feat ahead of him to maintain this building, but being part of the meetings along the way were very important. And I'll go a little quicker now. Clerk's office, as you see, we posted over 60 meetings. That's also 60 agendas, 60 meeting minutes. Their ability to kind of work with us and make sure that we were able to post things and comply with open-meeting law, I think, enhances the transparency of the project. And then you'll see a listed advisory, board of health, conservation, golf committee, planning board, and school committee. All of these boards and committees had aspects of the project, our project, touched what they do on a day-to-day basis, and their willingness to work with us along the way and collaborate made a huge difference. And then, overall, throughout the project, especially the latte squama of butters, just the feedback makes this a better project, right? If you don't have the feedback, you don't end up with the result that we have. So really quickly, in terms of what we've done, we've held 64 open-public meetings since June 2017, which is when this building committee was formed by the board at the time. This doesn't include those of us that were on the study committee before that that had 60 other-plus meetings as part of that. We had a committee member, mainly it was John Lyons, represented our committee at the weekly project team meetings, which was basically the meetings between the general contractor and the design team, and Mark and the chiefs were usually there as well. That's a tall undertaking for 65 weeks, every Tuesday morning, you know, in trailers, you know, very hot buildings, very cold buildings. That's the level of diligence we went to on this project. We obviously updated you pretty frequently. I've been a pretty frequent topic on your agendas, but I think we've also tried to make those briefings available to the public. And then, you know, there was no decision that was made kind of in a silo or vacuum. We had very stringent procurement guidelines, so that even if Mark wanted to, Mark couldn't go off and just make a decision without either vetting with either a chair of the committee or another member of the committee, or the overall committee, depending upon the financial aspect. And really, it didn't always come down to dollars and cents. A lot of it came down to, is there a better way to do this? And are we achieving kind of the goals we want in terms of a facility that's going to last many years into the future and serve the public safety interest that we had outlined at the town meeting? So in terms of where we're at, we've built a long overdue facility that meets today and tomorrow's public safety needs. Any of you that have been in the apparatus bays, I think that's the most telling sign of how the departments will grow into the buildings. There is a spot to actually park another trailer, piece of apparatus, and to actually move around between apparatus. We think we have created a level of transparency that hopefully can be replicated, you know, with other town boards and committees, but this will not be the last building that this town builds. In terms of open meetings, the timeliness of approval of meeting minutes, access to our meetings through SAM, basically publicly disclosing every invoice that we've approved, so if anyone wanted to question any dollars that were spent on the project, it's all out there. And while you may not agree with how every dollar was spent, we hope that the one thing that residents will be able to say is they always knew what was going on with the project and how their money ultimately ended up getting spent. We really set a clear tone and outlined our objectives upfront with the general contractor. I think the tone went a long way in terms of some of the final negotiations we had, but also making sure they kind of knew they were dealing with a pretty competent group of individuals, both on the town employee side, but also the volunteer side. It was referenced multiple times, and it came up again today, so I think just so the public knows, they've never seen a building project done like Southborough has done this building project. It's the constant feedback we're getting in terms of how we approach things. I like to think that they keep saying that that is a compliment, because I think we towed the line pretty hard on some issues, that if someone wasn't paying attention, I'm sure certainly would have cost us more, but may not have ended up with the beautiful building that we have. Timeline was always important to us, but always, we wanted to make sure quality was there, so while we put in our bid documents July 1st, I think we're all pretty satisfied that we hit August 13th. We had to move a golf course in the meantime. We kept the golf course open for all but one day of 65 weeks of construction. I thought that was a pretty tall order and ask, but it was an ask that was consistent with what we were asked to do, and so we did it. And we worked collaboratively with a lot of folks to make sure that that happened. But also, I think we're pretty proud of the promises that we made at the onset. We made a lot of bold promises, but I haven't heard anyone challenge us that some of our promises haven't been kept. I think we're really proud that we've tried to work through that. We've tried to keep the lines of communication open. Obviously, most of our updates were updates in nature to all of you, but one of the things that stands out to me in our charge was, we were supposed to come to you if we had any major issues. I think the one thing we came to with the entire project that asked for a vote was whether we add the canopies for the police cruisers or not, and what to do about that, given solar, no solar. So we thought just the level of communication that existed, not only between us and your board, but also the other boards that touched this project and had regulatory authority over it, I think was very important. And then, you know, we kept all of our vendors accountable. We ended up getting certain fee concessions on items that we didn't think we got what we were supposed to get for our contract. So we thought that that was one of our key goals, is making sure that everyone always knew there was someone looking over their shoulder, which seemed to be, I'll call it uncomfortable for them at times, but at the same time, you know, led us to a good result. So I know what most people are probably interested in is where are we at financially? So what we've done is taken everything we know to date. We've added a slight cushion in full transparency to kind of show what this building is probably going to end up costing the taxpayers. So when I appeared before you in February of 2007 to ask for your blessing of what number we were going to ultimately put in the warrant that you would sponsor at the special town meeting, we came with a budget of 22.6 that's outlined up there. We are estimating that when all of the expenses are paid from this project, specific to the actual building, so leaving the land off to the side, we're going to be at 19.6, so under $20 million. If you look around at some neighboring communities that are exploring similar-type facilities, they're talking in the tune of $25 to $30 million at this point. Part of that's just a changing economic landscape, especially with tariffs. But I think we struck at the right time on a lot of fronts, but if you were to take this 19.6 and take it back to some of the comparable facilities we were comparing to that were built five, six years ago now at this point, this number is under that as well. So I think it's money that's been well-spent and well-thought-out and carefully managed. So, key thing, this is what we put up to town meeting and said, this is what we think this project will cost you. We're going to focus on that gross cost per household for purposes of tonight's conversation. We told everyone it would cost them approximately $391, using, if you follow that average appraised house price, obviously this will go up or down based on where your house falls, on a $27 million project, so that included the land. Where we think we're going to come out is we think it's going to be about $295 per house on a gross cost. And if you kind of look at the raw numbers without going into loan amortization schedules, if you took the total principal that we thought we were going to spend on this project, plus the interest over 30 years, to build that 391 originally, we thought the town was actually going to pay $46 million, principal and interest, over a 30-year time period, we now estimate that's going to be about $35 million over a 30-year time period. So essentially, to the average taxpayer, we're hopefully putting $94 back in your pocket. I can't speak to what town meeting will do with other warrant articles in the past, but if you take this project in isolation, I think it's important to take it in isolation. That's kind of where we're at, from where we thought we were going to be and could be, to where we ended up. A lot of these have been highlighted before, but just why we're at that point, our ability to get it out to bid, so basically we approved it in March of 2017, we had it out to bid in about February of 2018, that was a feverish process, both for our committee, but also planning, conservation, board of health, all of those boards that had to spend time going through it and doing their due diligence. We got out before the steel tariffs. So this led to significant bid savings in our original budget. We had a rigorous change order management process, so we had about $2 million approved for contingency as part of our original budget. We haven't even spent a million of that yet. So even though we had these bid savings, which was phenomenal, you know, we then didn't go and spend the contingency because we had the extra bid savings. Because the finance team kind of early on realized that our principal was going to be much less in terms of the total building cost, they were able to go out and shorten the bond period, certain bonds. There's some short-lived assets like radios and technology equipment in the building that they were able to finance over a shorter period of time, and then, as you know, the bonds that are out there over 25 years as opposed to 30 for the largest bond on this project. And then obviously, I think it goes without saying, but I think we were projecting an interest rate over four in the projections that were used for town meeting. I don't think there's been any bonds over three throughout, for all the bonds that you've authorized to date. So where are we going? We obviously have some invoices we're still going to have to approve. We're going to have to monitor what we call an itemized punch list, which means we're going to hold back a final payment to the general contractor until the punch list has been resolved. And we expect that to be done by the end of the fiscal year, which is when our term We also probably will spend some time hopefully putting, some of it's in this presentation, but some of it's in our brains candidly, of, you know, what roadmap you should be considering for future building projects, and that goes from the start in terms of figuring out what you're building, how you're building it, where you're building it, to obviously the overall execution. So that kind of brings me to kind of what we'd like from all of you. I think most are pretty simple and self-explanatory, but there's obviously a significant amount of debt that's been approved that we could borrow that we have no need to. So while we work on kind of the absolute final math, I think you should absolutely, as I think you're opening your warrant tonight, be sponsoring an article to rescind some portion of the authorized borrowing at that town meeting. I think we can work on what that precise number is between you and the advisory committee between now and March, but I think that would go a long way to building the public's trust in terms of, you know, just because we had it, we didn't spend it. At the same time, I think, with your permission, I think having the building committee make a short presentation, so a much shorter version of what I just went through, of why we're doing this and what this means, I think is critical for those that did not follow this project and want to understand what was ultimately done. We've talked about this previously, but I know there was some discussion at one point about whether you wanted to name certain areas of the facility. I think the three items we had outlined were the public meeting room, the dispatch center, and the fire training tower. There's absolutely no rush, but given your naming policy, I thought it was important to at least outline that obviously no action has been taken on that. We don't expect you to take action for the grand opening, but while you have a committee in place, if you wanted vetting to get you a narrower list for consideration, I'm sure our committee would be open to entertaining that. But if you want to pass on that for now, that's certainly your prerogative. As we look forward to the grand opening at the end of October, which I'll have my reminder on my final slide of date and time, you know, anything that you would like from us? We do have hopefully some dignitaries coming. We're going to put an agenda together of speakers, and the police and fire departments are also going to offer tours of the building, but also have some special events. And then really finally, you know, is there anything else you would like us to do before we kind of fade away near the end of the fiscal year, once, you know, our official business is done? Because I think there's an appetite to kind of close up shop sooner rather than later to the extent possible. So with that, I'll just plug, before I take any questions, any of you have the grand opening ceremony Saturday, October 26th. I'm going to start at 10:00 AM with the formal program, and then tours will start right after, and we'll publicize- and we'll publicize some more of the actual events that the departments are planning shortly.
Thank you very much. Well, I'm just going to start. I'm just going to say that a tremendous success story is just such a gross understatement of what you folks did, what the town did as a whole. To talk about such a success story like this on public works, public construction-type projects is rare. I echo the slide that you had with the acknowledgements, but really, in my mind, the work that your committee did and the people on this committee are the true all-stars on this, and you're the ones that deserve the most credit, not only from this board, but from everybody in town for the diligence that everyone would be put into this. Coincidentally, we had a meeting at the senior center earlier today where, and we'll touch on it in the reports, were representatives from the state, from officials from the state for, as part of the Green Communities Grant Program Awards. So, that ceremony was held on at the senior center earlier this afternoon. There were representatives from probably 50-plus or minus cities and towns that attended as well. And it was an opportunity for us to talk to that group, both during the presentation and also individually, about this project, as they could look out the window and see the public safety facility. And, I mean, the word is out of how successful this project has gone. I think it's going to be a showcase project for many, many other municipalities to use as a yardstick. And I'm sure that the town of Southborough will be contacted by many others for advice on how best to do this, so.
Started before the departments were in.
Yeah. The, again, the appreciation that I have, it's impossible to boil it into words, and thank you all very, very much for everything that you did. And the only word that I would have changed in your presentation is disband. I don't want to see you people disbanded. I'm sure there's other things we can do, but I'd love to see you continue, but it's gross understatement, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Disband if you can.
There were some members trying to run out of our meeting before here, so.
No, the amount of work you guys did is unbelievable. At the very brief ceremony on September 9th, you could just read the faces of the folks in the fire department and the police department, and the appreciation they have. I think the town has that appreciation as well. I think that $22 million, $19 million figure is going to be cause of an awful lot of applause by folks in the town, it certainly is for me, that a project coming in under cost is pretty amazing. So, kudos and disband.
Jason, thank you for the update. I tell you, so I was on this board back in the day when this wasn't even contemplated. And so, I do want to thank, you've thanked a lot of folks, and your committee has been amazing. And all of you receive great enumeration for your work, right? Zero, you know? So, this, people in town should really appreciate and acknowledge, you know, the service of all of our volunteers in town. I know the EDC is here, this committee is here, folks from advisory are here. It's amazing what is done, how this town runs, and what a beautiful town we have. And it's run predominantly by volunteers. We have a great full-time staff, you know, that's here every day, but wow, you know? I can only imagine Mr. Lyons, the number of hours that you put into this, all for zero. And I hope every time you and your family drive by that public safety facility, you know, there's an extra special amount of pride for you and everyone, you know, on the committee who was, who made that happen. I want to thank St. Mark's as well. None of this would have been even possible had St. Mark's not had the idea of, hmm, maybe, maybe we'd sell you that golf course over there. You want to talk about it? And then, you know, the hundreds and hundreds of hours of, in particular, Mr. Rooney, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, to make this deal happen. St. Mark's, great negotiators, as is Mr. Rooney. We did quite well, they did well. It's a great partnership, but again, you know, none of this would have happened were it not for the partnership that we have with St. Mark's and really the diligence and the effort of one Mr. John Rooney on behalf of the board and this entire town to make it happen. Again, thank you, Mr. Rooney, and thank you to you and your members of your committee.
I'll echo the appreciation and congratulations to everybody involved. Great example. And the thing that I find most heartening here is it's an example of town government able to actually do a complex project over a period of years, manage it basically on time, under budget, and have everybody feeling good after it. I think there are a lot of towns who have done these kind of things, and those outcomes are fairly rare in my experience. So, I think it's a wonderful example. I think it sets the table for the future. As you mentioned, Jason, I think there will be other projects like this coming down the road at some point. And I think our ability to pull together the group of people that have contributed to this and maybe convince some of them to play again in the process if we have the next project down the road, gives me great hope that we'll be in great shape in terms of taking on the next one. So, thanks again to all who helped.
Mr. Shea, one alibi if I may?
Yes.
To the extent that you and your committee do meet again and do want to offer some ideas for naming, and want to offer those through the chair and, or Mr. Purple, I think that's a wonderful idea. Why not? Because I think at some point, this board is likely going to, you know, be considering doing just that. So, would love to jumpstart it with some ideas that, you know, you folks might have. I would make that suggestion through the chair if that's all right.
Yep. Mr. Lyons.
John Lyons, clerk of the committee. Oh, he took me three months after trying to figure out how to spell Jason's last name and put in the spell check. But another person that's not here is Chris Shanahan. He did a lot of work on the project too, with the furniture and everything, but we just want to acknowledge, you know, as a clerk, Jason Malinowski, what a great job he did. Great chairman and organized, and like I said, working with Mark Purple was unbelievable, the Tuesday meetings. Not enough accolades for Jason, though.
Thank you.
Pete Goodney, Vice Chairman. Early on, I think in one of our first meetings, we had to obviously pick who our lead was going to be. And I came from the other committee, I was the chairman of the other committee, and I really wanted a good building, and I really wanted to persevere. And I'm just so glad that we all picked Jason, because there's no way I could have talked for a half hour. And there's certainly no way I could have put the time and effort, even though I did retire for a period of time, that he has. I mean, I think there must be another Jason around, because he often is in two places at one time. The dedication that he put in is unsurpassed by anybody that I know. And the fact that he can get along with the other committees and report with the other committees and keep all the communication flowing, it's just fabulous. And I was remiss, I think he should have been on that slide for the special thanks, but of course, he wrote the slide, so we couldn't do that. But thank you, Jason.
Mr. Wood.
John Wood, numerous committees in the past and future and present. Jason's probably the best chair of any committee I've ever been on. He runs the best meeting. We never would have come in, he didn't say it, it's like $3 million under budget. Jason's got so many hours in on this, it's crazy. You've done a tremendous job, Jason. Thank you.
Excellent job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, can, thank you to my committee for standing up. But I guess, can we, can you have through Mark, if we were to move forward with Mr. Kalenda's recommendation, can, given that, I know you have a naming policy, can you just work with Mark to outline a process to the public? Because I think whatever process you want followed, we're happy to kind of start the process for you, but I think ultimately, obviously, it's going to be all of your decisions. So, I think the town, through Mark's office, should start the advertisement, and then we can receive it and vet and bring forward stuff. And we'll obviously work with the chiefs of the department too, because I think that's an important part of, you know, where some of these names may come from.
Agreed.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next appointment, Mr. Ballantyne, Finance Director, fiscal year 2021, budget update.
Yes, we're not going to, this isn't as joyous as that topic, but we'll try to do our best. So, this is our first budget meeting on the fiscal 2021 budget. As you may or may not know, annually, we do a brief introduction to the budget for the new year around about this time. It seems like it's earlier every year, but, and it's basically an opportunity for the board, if they have anything they want to see for the fiscal '21 budget they've been thinking about, they obviously can make that known here or follow up with us. We do, we'll just go through where we stand quickly with closing fiscal, well, setting the tax rate and closing fiscal '19, and just get a status on what departments are thinking for the new year real quick. As you may know, there's, I think there's three items on the consent agenda also that relate to this area, opening the warrant and setting a town meeting date and approving the budget directive, which I probably should be all fairly straightforward, but just so you know, there's a few items going on here. So, fiscal '19 ended obviously June 30th of '19. The annual audit again is on time this year. Doesn't seem to be any major issues, which is great. We will have the auditor in again, as we do annually, to speak with the board. He'll keep it short, but obviously, we'll try to keep it as interesting as we can. And if there's any questions about that process, he'll have an opportunity to bring those up. Free cash, looks like it's not approved yet, but it looks like it's going to be up quite a bit, somewhere on the order of close to $400,000. That's mostly due to strong local collections. Some of the collections are permits and some of our excise collections, others are interest earnings, which did go up this year due to the rate environment, and some one-time things that we'll probably discuss down the road, but obviously, I want to be careful with those because one-time collections are that, just that one time. So, we will estimate those a little higher next year. Again, that's not official, but it looks like we'll be raising those estimates up. So, the department turnbacks were slightly down in FY '19. As you know, departments turn back unused balances. It was fairly close, it was almost flat, but it was down slightly. So, the reserve fund expensed $152,000 for FY '19 for, you may not be aware, but several shortfalls at the end of the year that are not typical, but we usually have a few. The town finished with approximately $2.5 million in available levy capacity in, after the town meeting in April of '19. That may increase actually a little bit when we set the tax rate, so that's a good thing. The fiscal '19 continued. Here's our balances for various funds that we have. So, other post-employment, which is our set aside for our retiree health liabilities, now grown actually to 1.5 million. It's actually, doesn't include the $250,000 we put in July 1st, so it's actually almost 1.9 million right now. That's a pretty good story. It's actually starting to matter now a little bit. We first started that fund five years ago, whatever it was, it never seemed that it would make a difference, but it's actually starting to grow. So, we're going to be committed to keeping that going on. Stabilization fund earned a little bit of interest this year, it's up to $590,000. Thankfully, we have not used that in a number of years now. So, again, we always have that in case of an unexpected emergency within the town. We can use that to offset certain things. CPC fund, 2.3 million. Important thing to know about that is it's just a snapshot at June 30th, because it changes almost literally weekly. Money comes in, money goes out from the tax billings, project expenses. So, about a million or close to a million and a half of that was committed as of June 30th of '19. So, it gives you a little bit of an idea of, you know, what their true, truer balance is. Fiscal '20 to date, first quarter revenues, not a very good indicator of anything. One of our largest revenues, if you recall, is excise tax, which is almost all January through June that that's collected, the majority of it. So, kind of hard to tell at this point if anything's going on, but early on, it's early in the budget again, nothing's known that's going on with the budgets, that's good news. Capital that we had approved for this year, the cruisers have been ordered, the library facade is moving on, the bids are ordered, and the work will be starting on that. Hopefully soon, we can start seeing some actual work on that. And the TASER program that the police chief has instituted is just an ongoing replacements for that equipment. Several staff changes throughout various departments, we just mentioned that. That can be significant if it's, if it's certain positions, well, any position significant, but we have had quite a few ins and outs this year, people in town hall or other departments coming and going, but it's been good. We've got some great people. Next is the FY '21 scheduled capital requests. So, that plan is just updated, actually, it's not quite updated yet. I've got all the data received, it's not all in a format that's finished yet, but it does look like it's about $2 million more in planned general fund capital than last year. So, that's not quite unusual. We usually have departments, especially the three large departments, that have a lot of equipment. Some of the equipment's pretty big and expensive, so everything gets put into the start of the year, and then, as you see, we'll go through the town administrator, myself, the town accountant, with the department heads, and that'll probably get winded down a little bit. So, that leads me to, further discussion will take place as, you know, these projects and scheduling is discussed in the coming months. So, here's just a quick summary of the five-year outlook. This is actually going to change slightly when I finish the final request that I just received, so it'll be similar to this, but some of these numbers for FY '21 will change just a little bit. But it does give you an idea that yes, there's some more money, you know, that's being spent. Again, in the general fund, the dark line is the important one for most people, although all these funds are either fee-based, or, and the water fund obviously is water bill-based, which I think is a discussion we'll be having at some point about the water rates down the road, probably pretty soon. New initiatives requested and identified for FY '21. This is, again, sort of similar to the capital, is the initial requests that are either new or things departments want to do, that they want the board to be aware about. They will be discussed and vetted with the town administrator, myself, and the board, and advisory. So, there's going to be a lot more detail on these requests. Again, it just gives you an idea of, you know, are we adding hours this year? Possibly, because it looks like there's several departments that want to, you know, probably add staffing hours or positions. There's a few departments in this list that want to do some other things that require funding for, you know, various items that you can see on the list. So, it's kind of a mix of items, of salaries, new, maybe new programs, or new funding for certain things that the departments wish to, wish the board to know a little more about. As you know, youth and family came before the board last year with a very detailed plan. Seemed at the time there was a lot of support for that plan, and so, you know, I put theirs on there as a, you know, placeholder to, we'll revisit that, and obviously, I think they'll get the support that they had last year, and so that's a recurring request. I won't go through the list, but you can obviously see for yourselves that that's the initial list for the departments that have come in so far. Fiscal '21 other notes, related to tonight, the public safety building is almost done. Tonight, you just need to vote. Um, tonight, you just need to vote, um, um, a temporary note for two point five million, which really the last borrowing I do on this. It's not a permanent borrowing. Two point five million is probably more than we need, but usually, we get a little bit of a question at the end of a project, just in case, because it is common for these projects to have issues at the end. I'm hearing that there are none, which is good, so there may not be any. Um, but between the interest we're gonna earn on the two point five million, if we have a few hundred thousand extra, we're just gonna return it at the end of next September when this note comes due. Um, and with the interest we earned, it's really not gonna cost us very little to just have that extra amount, just in case. Um, so we'll close that down. Next, um, although this relates to the next, uh, agenda item, um, next September, we will decide whether we need to do another temporary note or do a permanent financing. That comes with a number of factors. Um, I think selectmen Stivers, I was just telling, that it, it's, it's expensive to do a permanent note, because you have to do a formal rating. Uh, it goes through a legal process, and, um, it's not something you really want to do until you have enough debt to kind of make it, um, worth it, so to speak, with the money going out the door for the cost, for the administrative costs. So that we'll look at down the road. Um, the capital planned increase of, um, one point two eight million is, um, just a quick, uh, you don't have the list in front of you. Again, it's, uh, almost finished, but the specific list, but it does include several library repairs. Again, equipment for public safety and DPW. Um, I think many of you are aware of some building improvements to senior center possibly, or, um, you know, Cordova Road. Um, those are being discussed at the moment, so we'll have more information on them. And then some various smaller items that some, uh, departments are looking for. Uh, the debt is actually going down slightly. That is great news. Um, it should be, i- if you, if we didn't have any future obligations, it would probably, um, be on a downward curve now for, for a while, so that's, that's a good thing, um, because it did spike with, obviously, the recreation and public safety projects. Um, the full levy available for funding, um, will be clo- you know, will be estimated closer to the tax rate setting. Uh, we've got a number of pieces done with the tax rate. It's sort of seventy-five percent done, but it's not quite there yet to, uh, release any kind of too much information, except for the free cash. We know it was going up. New, new growth will go up too. Will probably double. Um, so that's, that's definitely gonna go up. Um, but no large developments, um, besides this year, um, which will be explained further during the tax rate setting process, why it was double. But after that, um, I know I keep saying this, but in the future, there's really not a whole lot of big projects going on. So it's, it's, it's the, the old saying of decks and roofs and windows and stuff, so new growth is probably not gonna be a great source of, um, new growth. That's the way you'd say it. Um, local revenue, uh, local aid, um, again, local revenue is those revenues that had us go up in free cash quite a bit, so that did increase that, uh, almost half a million dollars. Um, so we'll be adjusting those revenues again, just to mention. Um, and local aid was basically, um, almost virtually flat, um, you know, within twelve hundred dollars or so. It was very close, so nothing, nothing much going on in local aid. The next dates of importance, and this will partially be in your dates on your consent agenda, is the budget planning group starts meeting in October, and that's a unofficial group that has key players from the school committee, advisory committee, myself, Mark, uh, the town administrator, and, um, some other financial people. And it's just to talk, almost like tonight, we're just getting together and saying to the, you know, mostly between the schools and town, what's going on this year? What are you guys doing at the schools? What are we doing at the town? Anything big we need to be aware of? Just, you know, just throwing things out there. Um, so the budgets will obviously be released in October. We're gonna have another update in late October. That's when we'll have the tax rate information pretty much done, and a little bit more information on capital and all that. Um, and then we get into the really, the heavier stuff of getting, uh, advisory to set a schedule to start reviewing things, and going through and doing the internal work to talk with the department heads along with the finance team, and then, uh, coming back to the board with revisions, and going through the process in December and January and doing all those revisions. And then, as you can see, um, this board will be ready, hopefully in late January, to vote to support something, and, um, if we set the, uh, March meeting tonight, we will have our, another successful annual town meeting in March of twenty twenty. That's about it for now. Again, this is kind of a brief, very draft-type, like, here's what's kinda, where we sit right now. But if the board does want to see anything particular in this budget, or have any reaction to what's being asked, anything like that, again, you can let us know now, or you can let us know later when you think about it, or wait for more information.
Thank you very much. Questions from Mr. Ballantyne. Ms. Stivers.
Thanks very much, Brian. Um, I, I do have some questions that I will follow up with you later on in terms of more detail. I don't want to take time here, but, uh, a couple of things. One is that, uh, I, we've talked in various meetings in the past about the local meals tax option, and I didn't see mention of that there. I would hope that that's on the table for consideration. That, you know, doesn't generate a huge amount of money potentially, but, uh, in this environment, every dollar can be very helpful, so I'd be eager to have conversation down the road on that one.
And that is a conversation the board, it, this board should probably have. I do know advisory is also having that as a formal discussion.
Right.
Um, so I think we're just waiting to see what comes out of that, and then, um, maybe see if the selectmen want to entertain that too.
Okay. Um, also, um, if you step back from this a little bit, it, it looks like from here that the state aid is gonna be relatively flat, but if you think about it more globally, the schools are obviously, you know, seventy percent or more of our budget. Uh, my read on the reports for the state budget for schools sounded like, uh, that came out more favorably than it started, and do we, do we know, for example, if the school budget is likely to be, uh, uh, under less pressure this year in terms of state aid, and what the impact that might have on them as we think about how you put the municipal and the, and the school piece together?
I, I don't know enough about that at this point to, to answer that one. However, I, I kind of feel that that's probably one of our agenda items on this, um, upcoming meeting, which we're gonna be having soon, to get their feedback, to see if they're expecting, um, you know, all this talk about the new formula and how it's gonna take into effect new things. Um, and even down the road, if they have more information on, um, I don't think that can, that, they've made final recommendations on the formula yet.
Not yet, I don't think.
So it's kind of, uh, I, I'm kind of just, we'll probably get an update at that time, and we can pass that on.
I guess my point is that if they wind up getting some relief relative to where they thought they were gonna be, that trickles through to less pressure on the municipal budget.
It should, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Clenda.
Thank you, Mr. Ballantyne. So, and also, thank you for the, uh, new initiatives that you identified for FY twenty-one in particular. I know that youth and family had a lot of, uh, had a great presentation last year. I don't think, um, we adequately funded them, so I'm, I'm glad to see that on here again, and I think that, I look forward to, to that discussion as well as the others, that were some, some unfinished business, um, left there. In terms of a, of a meal tax, you know, obviously, have, we can have the discussion. We can have it every year. You're gonna get a lot of pushback from, um, you know, likely members of EDC. You're gonna get, you know, pushback from residents who are then gonna get higher costs passed on to them. You're gonna get pushback from businesses that were an unfriendly place to do business, so, um, but, eh, not, always good to have a good, robust discussion on these things and see where it plays out.
I think it will be robust. We did have a discussion about it several years ago. I'm not sure if you were involved. This was quite a while, while ago. It was way back. It was way back, um, but, again, you, the, those type of arguments were brought forth, so.
Always a good discussion to have when it's on the agenda, which.
It is not.
It is not tonight, so.
True.
Mr. Healy.
Yeah, no, Brian, appreciate the framework. Um, and, um, the, the one thing I'm curious about, I think I may have asked you about this before, the, um, I've looked on the, on the, on the website, and CPC, which is a, obviously, a, a sizable, um, um, amount of money that's, um, available for various projects. Um, there used to be a, an annual sort of breakdown of exactly where the funds were. I mean, you've done a nice job of doing it sort of informally. Eh, should I keep pestering you about that, or should I pester the folks on the, uh, the CPC? Who do I bother?
Well, probably more CPC. Um, we do have the data available as far as what's been approved and where things are sitting in buckets. As you know, CPC's broken up into certain, um, buckets that they were, open space, yeah.
And that's the sort of thing the reports had before. They, they broke it down that way.
So we do have that data. We can always bring that forth. It's easy enough, if that's all you're looking for.
I think Mr. Purple is gonna answer maybe part of my question.
Yeah, so you had brought this up before. I think it was in the vein of, uh, the reports on the website only go to two thousand fifteen. You wanted to see the next several years. Um, I had reached out to the, um, uh, the, the new chair of, um, of CPC, um, and asked for those to be updated and have not, obviously, gotten the traction on that yet. We are having more conversations, um, golf-related, um, and I will work that back in to see if, if we can have that happen. Again, Brian's office can provide the data, but they need to then take that and put that into a report form.
Yeah, I, I'm interested, but I'm, I, I, I also get inquiries about it, um, and would like to be able to, to, um, respond with, with.
So it sounds like, uh, the town administrator's on top of it, so, um, at least for now, so, uh, but if we do need to do anything, we're, if we do need to do anything, of course we will. Sure.
Just one quick follow-up on the CPC, actually, for me. You had mentioned that the number that's in the presentation is a kind of snapshot in time. Do you have a sense for whether, uh, we've received a state payment recently on that, or if there's one anticipated, and also?
The match?
Yeah.
The match comes in, uh, well, actually, the match is coming up, yes. It's, uh, mid-October to late October, and I think it's, it was still, I don't know if the new fees affected it much for this year, but I know they put those new, uh, registry of deed fees, and that's gonna boost it up quite a bit. Um, I think it was in the twenty-five, twenty-six percent range last year, somewhere around there.
I thought it was lower than that, but I could be wrong.
It had been lower than that. I don't, that's what I remember, but, um, I just don't know if it's gonna affect this year that much, because that was just done, that new law.
I read that's next year.
Yeah, that's kind of what I figured. It's probably next year.
Okay.
But that will help them also, yes.
Okay. So that will be a bump that we'll recognize in the, in the snapshot as well for?
Yes, yes.
Before the end of this calendar year.
Yes.
And hopefully, that snapshot would have the encumbrances as well, so you gotta sort of balance, and then what's currently encumbered out of that, so you sort of get the net available, if you will.
Right, because you need some, right.
Thanks.
Uh, so with that, um, I'm gonna make a motion under our consent agenda items, D, E, and F, to approve fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget calendar, set the annual town meeting date for Saturday, March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty, and open warrant for annual town meeting while Mr. Ballantyne's here. Move seconded. Any other discussion on those? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pass those, pass unanimously. Um, let's move on to the short-term note issuance.
Very quickly, because I think you all know about it now. Um, so this is the last piece of it, and, um, yeah, I mean, the only times I'll be coming from the board now is either, again, a renewal for a note or if it's a permanent borrowing. That's the last time you'll see about this. So it was a great story, and, uh, we'll continue to tell it, but, um, I do need the board to just take a vote to just accept the, um, obviously, uh, selectman Healy probably can't vote in that, but the other three members, if they can just vote to accept the bonds as written, um, in the bond documents, that's all I need.
So moved?
Seconded.
Seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
And for the record, I'm recused.
Okay, that passes threes to zero. One recusal. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, next on the agenda, Ms. Connolly, EDC Chair, Committee Report.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us here. Uh, as you know, this is a follow-up. We met back in the spring shortly after this board was appointed, and, uh, we talked about, oh, I'm sorry.
Sabotaged.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you. Um, thank you for having us here tonight. Uh, as you know, this is a follow-up. We met back in the spring shortly after this board was appointed, and, um, the, your new board, and we, we said that we would give you periodic updates, so we were here, um, over the summer at one point, I believe, at the end of June, and we're back now to just give you a brief update on what we've been working on, um, what we plan to be working on for the next chapter of, of our downtown initiative, and, um, and ways that we want your input, um, and support. So, um, thank you. So some things we've been working on, um, is, I, I think we mentioned last time we talked that we were going to be applying for a grant from the state uh, through the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs. We were hoping that, um, we would know about that by the end of the summer, but, um, we, uh, we found out that even though the application process was closed, they're inconsistent about when they actually distribute the grant awards, so, um, we don't have that information yet. Uh, we're, what, what we, uh, requested under the grant application was money for, uh, to help us jumpstart our two top priorities that we've identified as being the, the two biggest barriers to downtown development, one being revising the zoning for downtown, specifically, uh, the, the zone, creating a zoning overlay district, and the other, uh, a wastewater management solution. So, um, we have been delayed due to, due to the grant, but we didn't want that to, um, hold up our work, so we've been doing our homework aside from that. Um, as far as the, the wastewater treatment has gone, um, we've been doing our own due diligence, and we're, uh, we've met with, we've met with, um, other towns, and we've met with, we've, um, looked at different, um, wastewater management systems, and we're looking at, we're taking an inventory with Claire Reynolds' help about, uh, what systems are in place in town right now so that, hopefully, when we are awarded a grant, um, we'll be able to provide, um, all the background information to whoever's conducting the feasibility study to help, you know, so that we're well-versed on it, and also so that we're not spending money for somebody else to do legwork that we can do ourselves. So, um, that's one thing that we're doing on the wastewater management front. As far as zoning, um, we are, we're continuing to, to press that, that mixed use is, um, is an integral piece of the downtown initiative. Um, we've seen that come up many times. Um, and we have, uh, we've been working with the planning board, and we're compiling, um, we're, we're looking at other towns and how they've done zoning, um, in, is particularly towns that we think are in the same bucket of, of what we love about downtown Southborough. So we're starting to dive into those. We're actually have a meeting scheduled for next week. That's specifically, um, it's on the twenty-fifth, uh, um, in the evening, um, next Wednesday, if, if anybody wants to join us, um, to start to dive into, uh, some of the specifics about, um, what makes a zoning bylaw, um, what, what characteristics and what consistent, uh, pieces of it we might want to incorporate. Again, we're hopeful that we can get some grant money to have a consultant help us, because we are not, you know, we don't, we don't see ourselves as fully equipped to rewrite a zoning bylaw, but, um, but we're hoping that we at least have a structure and outline in place of things that we think are important to provide.
Julie, if I, can, can, who's involved in the meeting on the twenty-fifth?
This is, this is the EDC's Downtown Initiative Subcommittee, so it's just us, starting to wrap our, wrap our brains around it. Um, another piece that has come up a lot, um, in our recent discussions is adding a style guideline component. This is something that a lot of towns do to, um, create consistency and uniformity. It, it benefits, I believe, both, um, both the, the look of the town, but also it helps when we're thinking about, um, attracting businesses and people who might want to come in and do some development work downtown. They know exactly what they're in for. Um, they'll, they'll have, uh, a picture. Uh, they'll have clear rules about what is and isn't allowed, what is and isn't available, and to the extent that there are different developers coming in, doing different projects, we have a, a sense of uniformity. Um, so that's something that we're, we're beginning to talk about. Again, I don't know that the EDC is the right committee to prepare design guidelines, um, but it's something that we wanted to raise to you. Uh, we'll continue to work with the planning board and see what their thoughts are, but, uh, we think that potentially, a logical next step would be to, um, create a committee or to work with the planning board, uh, to, to put together some design guidelines that go along with the overlay district, um, and. that go along with the overlay district and help to both encourage development and make sure that development is controlled in a way that, that we want to see it. I've already talked a little bit about this. So we're, we spoke, when we spoke back a few months ago, we talked about different opportunities downtown. Obviously, spaces is very limited. We've, and one thing that we, we've been looking at is, you know, what spaces are available. Obviously, we have the project going on at Two Main Street, Peter Bemis' project, which seems to be going forward. We're looking at property down at the end of Park Street and 21 Boston Road, which is that red building on Boston Road, the stump dump lot on School Street. And then another piece of this which we, which we raised to the Board of Selectmen last fall is the parcel 5440, which is the National Grid parcel. And I can, which I believe is the one. I'm not good at this. It's the one, it's the big square on the top left. I don't know if I have a pointer. So that parcel is owned by National Grid and Sam actually brought this to our attention about a year ago. And they, they aren't using the parcel and where space is such a premium and where we know that we're going to run into issues with things like parking, with things like where we would put a wastewater treatment plant. There seems to be an opportunity for, for the town to acquire the property. This is, anecdotally, it sounds like this has been done in other towns at different times. National Grid and other utility providers just buy up property. And they've owned this for quite some time, they're not doing anything with it. So we reached out to this board back in October of last year and requested that, that, you know, your input on it, your feedback and to help us make a connection and see what National Grid would be up for. We've heard anecdotally stories of, of National Grid either donating property or selling it very cheaply because they're not using it anyway, it's sitting there, they're paying taxes on it. So this is something that I'd like to raise with this board again, to see, to get your guidance on it and, and see what your thoughts were as far as moving forward. I, it's one of these windows of opportunity that I'm afraid if we don't jump on, we're eventually going to lose to something else. And I think that this is an important, important piece of, of the downtown puzzle. So it's something that I wanted to raise here.
Julie, if I may ask a question.
Sure.
Regarding that, so anecdotally, there was some, did National Grid reach out? Did someone reach out to them?
We have not reached out to National Grid yet. I believe in Claire Reynolds, maybe I'll speak to this because she was the one who, who was handling this. I think she maybe talked to somebody who worked there. Claire, you might be able to fill in a little bit more. But we haven't spoken to anybody at the, come on down, at, at a high level.
And Mr. Purple, have you heard of any of this, possible donating?
We're not sure that this is, you know.
Throwing it out there.
Yeah, we're not sure that they're going to donate, but we've heard anecdotally that they are, you know, that it's property they're sitting on. They've in instances been, and again, this is.
I'd like to be the first to thank National Grid publicly.
Stop.
No, I would love to hear more about that and then see where this could go. I don't want to lose sight of this while you're on the topic, so.
Sure, yeah, no, I think this is, this is important, this is one of the pieces that I wanted to make sure was, was raised tonight. So I'll turn it over to Claire.
Well, thank you, I hadn't planned really on this, but, okay, so Claire Reynolds, a former EDC member. That property is 1.6 acres. There was an email that was sent almost a year ago identifying it to the Board of Selectmen saying that they are not using it. I had also checked before I sent the message with Jim Cleary, who was very familiar with the property from when he used to work with National Grid. And everything is, essentially, it's a clean lot. There's no, whatever was there before had been cleaned up and everything. So it was a really good property to, to do. I did a subsequent couple of follow-ups with the Board of Selectmen just to keep it in front because the situation was, is the Board of, is the EDC the right people to contact National Grid? Or should it be from the Board of Selectmen? And it's the kind of thing where you don't call 1-800-NATIONAL-GRID where you call to pay your electric bill and find out about buying a piece of property. So I had researched a couple of options and it, it needs to have a decision made. Who's going to contact them and what's the strategy going to be? Do they want to donate it? And the reason is, is because in doing this pre-feasibility study, should we get the grant? The key thing is, is to identify, as you can see on the map there, properties that are potential for development. And the reason why that's important is because if we do get the grant money, the initial grant was for $50,000, 25 for zoning and 25 for a wastewater study. Paul Pazinski has been absolutely fabulous in working with me in terms of what are all the steps. And, you know, you're an engineer, I don't know if this is your particular area, but you know how these things go. So there's a, if we get the money for a feasibility study to determine what type of system or systems could be constructed in the downtown area. And what it does is it makes the whole attractiveness viability for a developer to come in because every, a study has already been done in terms of what would be available. In order to do that, one of the things that was done was to identify what are the properties down there in the downtown area for development? Whether it is for, some of the things that were mentioned in the study that was done by the EDC, the survey that was done in October of 17, in terms of, you know, people wanting a yogurt shop or all the way to, you know, Dave's Bar and Grill, so to speak. So it was, so the reason that that was put together is so that an engineer could decide what kind of system is, or systems are viable for the downtown area. Anybody have questions on that?
So getting back on to this pending donation, I mean, it sounds like a great opportunity for National Grid, not only to receive additional goodwill from the town of Southborough, but also to save on taxes that they otherwise would be paying on a piece of property that they do not use.
Get a tax write-off for a donation.
An amazing opportunity for our friends, great friends at National Grid. Mr. Purple, is this something that you would look into? Who, who do you recommend would be the right person to contact then?
So I'll do whatever the board would like me to do. If that's a direction from the board, I'm happy to try to reach out through the contacts. The only contact that I've had with Grid has been with regards to the Public Safety Project and some of the infrastructure, you know, needs. We've got a great person who handles that. Could probably use him to find my way through the food chain as to who the person would be to at least have that conversation. If the board would like me to explore and, and get some more information, some initial feedback, and then we can decide best way to proceed. Again, this is probably something that is going to be, I think is, Mr. Shea, I believe, actually it was you, Mr. Kalenda, art of negotiation, you know, that we talked about earlier with Mr. Rooney and St. Mark's. This is something that's going to have to be, you know, handled, you know, probably along those same lines, assuming it's not something like, you know, a straight donation.
Mm-hmm. I would suggest we do, I didn't hear from the other members.
Can I make a suggestion?
If I may, just one other thing is, the way that I was able to get a contact there was actually through Karen Galligan because she had to reach out because of the downtown easements that were required. And so between Karen and working with David Berry in downstairs department, thank you, Treasures Department, was how I was able to get contacts there.
I'd also point out that our State Representative Carolyn Dykma is on the House Utilities Committee and knows some of the National Grid people, so that might be a useful contact to pursue.
Yeah, I can't imagine, there's not a good reason to at least make the inquiry. I suspect you're going to end up in their real estate office pretty quickly. I don't know how, exactly how to get there, but I'm sure that's who you'd have to, to deal with. I'm just looking at this, this is landlocked, I mean, basically, it's.
Not quite. It actually has about a 10-foot neck on it that connects to Main Street. So technically, it's not a buildable lot. That's not shown on this map.
Okay.
But I think the driveway, I'm not sure, I think the driveway that goes down past the nail salon is part of the National Grid property, they may have an easement there, I'm not positive about that. But if you look at it on the assessor's map.
Looking at this, it's probably an easement.
There's a neck.
And not to put Karen on the spot, but. Let's do it anyway.
Nothing that comes before the word "but" matters, Karen.
Is because what's not showing on the map is, is like a 10-foot strip of a driveway that goes down to Main Street.
Main Street, that's the, that's presumably an easement. But that's technically on the assessor's map, part of the National Grid property, that neck on it.
So I guess my final comment is, is in agreement with, it sounds like everybody else, which is the inquiry is certainly worthwhile.
Sounds like there's consensus to start that inquiry process.
Yeah, and to your point, I think exactly the reason that, exactly the fact that it is landlocked or almost landlocked for all intents purposes makes it a great potential site for things like a wastewater treatment plant. You know, it's a little hidden, it's off the grid, but it's, it's in an area that's accessible to, to the other parcels we'd want to service. So I think it was an excellent find by Sam and I thank him for his contribution in bringing that to our attention last year. And I thank you for any efforts that you can do. We've been, we've been wanting to do this, but we don't wield any authority, we can't find the town, we can't, you know, we can't purchase the property as the Economic Development Committee. So we definitely appreciate your, your attention to this and your support for this. So if there's anything you want us to do to help you with that, as far as, you know, drafting any letters or, you know, any of the legwork, we're happy to do it. We just wanted, we want your support. And I think, you know, you're sending the letter and making the contact carries a lot more weight than anything that we could do on our own, so thank you.
And for those at 5, 7, 9, and 11, School Street, there obviously will be due diligence before anything does proceed on this.
Of course, absolutely. Yeah, we're very sensitive to the butters. So one of the things that, that's, that we've talked about for a long time since we started on our path here with the Downtown Initiative now almost two years ago, is, you know, what is this vision that we have? And, you know, obviously, we're, we have constraints, physical constraints of space. And the first step was identifying some of these parcels that, that are up on this map here as potential areas for development. And the next question, well, what does this look like? And we, as you know, we started this process off with our survey where we tried to take the temperature of the residents of the town and see what types of things they were looking for. We wanted to, we get a lot of questions on this and we, and we keep trying to, you know, we keep trying to convey that we're not looking for overdevelopment. We want something that fits in with what's there, makes it nicer than what it looks like now. We've shown around some of the pictures of what Southborough used to look like back 80 or so years ago. And it's actually, you know, we've lost a lot of very prominent looking structures. And we're looking to not, you know, not overdevelop it to, you know, bring it back to a place where it was a nice street to walk down and things for people to do and places for people to gather. So what we did was we engaged Waterman Associates to put together some renderings. And I caveat this with a very big, this is not what we're proposing. This is an idea of what we think, what we envision and that fits within the physical space that we've identified for some of these parcels. So again, this is not what we're proposing. This is, this is an idea of, of what we think might be able to go there, incorporating our priorities of, of walkability, of beautification, of providing amenities like small-scale restaurants and shops for, for people in town. So the first parcel that we asked Waterman to, to take a look at was, was the Park Street. And you can see on the map here, it traverses both sides of Park Street. We have been in touch with the owners of this property and it sounds like, you know, they, they may be amenable to some sort of sale or potential development in the future. So this is not, this physical space itself is not a pipe dream. And we asked Waterman just to, you know, so the picture on the left is what it is now, which is pretty much nothing. And the picture on the right is an aerial of just what members of the EDC are thinking. This is a draft document, but sort of, we wanted to get something on paper to show people, you know, this isn't a super Walmart, this is, you know, we want green space, we want walkability, we want something that people want to come to that acts as an asset to the town. So we have a couple of other pictures here as well. And again, we need one, you know, there's many steps between here and there. One of them, we need to make the space tenable, something that a developer would want to build that has economic benefit for a developer to come and put in. So that's why the zoning piece and the wastewater management piece are so critical and because that makes spaces like this attractive and potentially financially viable. So, so again, we just wanted to present a vision of what we saw as a use for the Parks, the Park Street area. Small buildings, tables, benches, these are just our thoughts on the space. We, we did try to consider some practical elements like accessibility for delivery, accessibility for emergency vehicles, that's why there is more, there's wider walkways, you know, some wider paved or, or stoned space than we originally were thinking about because we want to make sure that it works from a practical standpoint. But again, this doesn't necessarily comply with every piece of zoning or now in existence or every law or ordinance now in existence, this is just, this fits on this physical space. So that's our vision. The other piece of property that we looked at was, was the Boston Road property, 21 Boston Road, that red building there. We didn't make a ton of changes, we just kind of spruced it up, added patio seating, just again, to show a vision of what it could potentially look like. And there's potential, based on the location, for this to possibly connect with the Park Street, with the Park Street parcel as well. So these are just some of the things that we're thinking so as, to give people an idea. So where we are now in our next steps, the first important piece of it was to present to you the, the National Grid property. And I appreciate your reception to that and your willingness to, to move forward with that. So thank you for that. We're going to continue to wait, to work on obtaining a wastewater engineering feasibility study. One piece to that, since, since we were following the budget presentation, as far as the, the grant goes, there is a contribution piece of it. So we, again, we were hoping to know more information about, about that. By now, we don't, but we expect to know shortly and we'll certainly keep you apprised that the town is required to chip in a contribution to, to match a portion of the grant. And again, we don't know exactly what we're going to be awarded, so we may, you know, if, if we don't receive enough grant funding to cover a feasibility study, we'll continue to seek out other funding sources, but it might be something that we'll be coming back to you on at some point in the future. We're also continuing to work on our mixed-use overlay amendment and, and talk about style guidelines. And we, we would appreciate your, your input, to the extent you have any regarding how we go about creating a way to, to begin to talk about style guideline recommendations and what the appropriate committee is to do that, or if we need to form a new committee or group. I know some municipalities have a standing board of, that, that does design guidelines and reviews designs. I don't know that that's necessary here, but it's just one way that, that some communities choose to do it. We are, we're talking, so now that we have this vision, the renderings that we just showed you, we are, we're bringing in some people who, who are either small-scale developers or who work with small-scale tenants to, to look at what we have and say, is this viable? Is this a space that would be able to be tenanted? Because if not, then. Because if not, then nobody's going to develop it. So we're making sure that our grand vision jives with reality, so that's on our, that's, we're reaching out to people to find the appropriate people to talk to us about that. We're continuing to look for other funding sources, and we're also reaching out to other boards and committees. We've met with the Planning Board several times. We're going to go back to them soon when we have a little bit more context around the zoning issue. We've met with the Zoning Board of Appeals, and we're meeting with CHOPSE on, this week actually, on Thursday. And we've just today reached out to the Open Space Preservation Committee. We want to meet with them as well. We've talked to a few people from the Trails Committee. We're going to continue to work with them. And, you know, we've said from the beginning, this is a community effort. It needs to be a collaborative effort. This trans, this traverses many different boards and committees, so we want to make sure that we have everybody's collaboration and input on this. That's all.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Connolly?
Oh, one more thing, sorry. One more follow-up that's not on here. We are planning a public forum, hopefully for the end of October. We're looking at, we're trying to settle on a date. This would be our sixth public forum, because we feel like the public's input is incredibly important. The last one that we had was very successful. John Wood had the great idea of not only reaching out to folks digitally, but by doing and posting in public places, but by putting out a mailer in the mail to residents, and that seemed to help get really, really strong turnout. So we're going to be doing that again. This will be our sixth public forum since we started this process. Sorry.
Thanks. Mr. Kalenda?
So, thank you, Julie. That was really a solid presentation. I know you didn't do it on your own. You've got a great group of fellow volunteers that really continue to donate their time and effort on behalf of our town, and just imagine what that space could look like, right? So, and it takes effort, and it takes, you mentioned, the word "collaboration", I think, is key, and you mentioned a number of other boards and committees. You have had a number of public forums. You're going to have more. What kind of reception have you received from other boards and committees, number one? And number two, what could we do to help further the effort?
Sure. The ZBA was very supportive. We met with them shortly after we, before we had our renderings, but when we had, when Mareka and a few other folks on our committee had found some of the older pictures of South Borough, and I think the contrast is very striking, and they seemed very moved by that, and the zoning board said that they would, that they would support us in any way that we asked them to, you know, to get this moving. The Planning Board, we've met with several times, particularly about the mixed-use zoning issue, and we've had, we've made a lot of progress together, and they've asked us to prepare a draft zoning bylaw. So that's why, again, we felt a little bit under bandwidth to do that and under, you know, that's, none of us are zoning amendment writers. We don't write zoning laws, but we certainly have some talent and expertise on our committee, and we're hoping to get, to use some grant money, hopefully we get some grant money, to hire somebody who is an expert at that to help us, again, within the parameters that we're starting to try to extrapolate from other communities.
So I know we've kind of broached this subject before, but can this, and I've thrown it out as an idea, but can this board liaise with the EDC and on the drafting of that kind of mixed-use bylaw for consideration by planning? Could we utilize the services of Town Council if he's, has expertise in this area? And how do we move, help move this forward? Mr. Purple, Mr. Shea?
Well, I'm not sure if the expertise to provide EDC the assistance, I think Julie very eloquently explained that they don't have the experience to do this, so therefore they're looking to bring somebody in to do. No disrespect to the board. I'm not sure the board can help provide that expertise directly for...
No, we can provide some leadership, though, hopefully, in helping to make it happen with the right resources.
Correct, and I'm not, again, you know, zoning is kind of a specialty. You know, we could ask Council and see what his ability, his bandwidth is to provide that assistance, if that's what the board wants to do.
And Julie, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the meeting that we had in the spring timeframe, this was discussed and it was brought up, and I think that one of the key, you know, dominoes that has to fall, if you will, is getting that grant and having the ability to reach out to those that do have experience in putting zoning language together. So that at least it can be that initial attempt at a zoning change that we can then review, get behind, support, and work with EDC to advance.
So I'd like to hear where the status of that grant is, because those things, they could take months and months and months.
Yeah.
Where do we, couldn't we, at the same time, you know, look for some resources that we'd be able to ask for assistance while the grant process is going on, so that we're not losing more and more time?
So one thing that we've discussed, we're doing, we're doing two things. We're looking at other towns' bylaws, which was the suggestion of the Planning Board, and we're also going back to the zoning law, the zoning bylaw that was proposed several years ago, specifically looking at the portion that related to the downtown business village district. And we're limiting that scope even more, because, as most of you know, that included all the business village districts. We're going to, you know, focus only on doing an overlay district just for the Main Street area of the downtown, the downtown business village district only for Main Street in that area. So, you know, again, our path forward that we've identified without having additional resources is that we're going to start trying to use those to extrapolate a framework of what we're looking for. Again, we're relying on grant money that we haven't been granted. We're not sure when we're going to be granted. That is an integral piece of this, and if we don't get it, we're going to, we're going to have a problem.
So therein lies the challenge. So what I would suggest, at least, you know, we're asking, you know, why not at least ask the question of Town Council? Does he, or does he know others who would have some expertise in this area? What would that cost if we were to try to write something while this grant process is even going on? Again, there's no guarantee you're going to get it, so what's the harm in at least asking the question?
Julie, the approach is, the grant is two prongs, is it not? It is the zoning prong and the wastewater prong?
Correct.
Okay.
The wastewater prong is for feasibility study.
Okay. And there's really no indication of when that money might come through?
No, we thought it would be by the end of the summer, and we've been checking in, and we think likely it will be sometime this fall, but we don't know for sure, and we don't know when this fall.
It, I mean, there's little doubt that when you hear back, assuming you get the money, but even if you didn't get the money, I mean, drafting a zoning bylaw, unless somebody happens to have, have sort of developed an expertise, it's going to fall to a lawyer.
Right.
I mean, you're talking about, you know, a legal document. And so I think maybe Town Council is a good starting point for getting some idea of, A, where we'd go for that, whether it's the grant money, or if we have to look for a Plan B. And also, maybe you, in conjunction with Town Council, get an idea of what that's going to cost. And then we'd know if a grant is going to cover it, and if it isn't going to cover it, again, is there a Plan B that makes any sort of economic sense? Does that make sense?
Yeah. Does it make its way into capital?
Yeah.
And that's why I was, I was thinking during the budget presentation that, you know, we need to be considering that and submitting that as both a Plan B and a Plan, okay, it costs more than we thought it was going to, or, you know. I think we estimated $25,000 is what we requested for the grant for this.
For the zoning component of it, or for both?
Yes, for the zoning component of it.
Okay.
For a consultant. And that was, you know, we have the whole history from the previous zoning committee that worked for, over the course of several years, and all the effort that that took. So that's what we requested, you know, and we'll see what we get.
Okay.
Brian? Do we have some consensus, at least, to ask the question of Council?
Can I make a comment?
Go ahead, Julie.
I'd offer a couple of things. One is that, kudos to EDC for providing some momentum to move this forward. It seems to me that a key issue here is to have a clear picture of what it is we want downtown to look like, and there are a number of different views of that around. I think that EDC has one, Planning Board may have one, others may have one. But before you ask an attorney to write a zoning bylaw modification, it'd be helpful to say, here's what we want people to be able to do down there, and here's what we don't want people to be able to do down there. I think Julie's comment, zoning advisory committee actually has an 100-plus-page document that didn't get to Town Meeting, that actually had language in it for overlay districts, so I think there's a head start that we could use there. But ultimately, it seems to me that it's a collaborative effort between a number of boards, I think, as Julie suggested. And as opposed to having, you know, one-on-one conversations, I think it'd be very helpful to have Board of Selectmen, EDC, Planning Board, Zoning Board, Board of Health, in terms of some of the wastewater issues, open space, trails, the whole collection of CHOPSE committees, to sit down and have a workshop at some point to say, okay, let's figure out if we can define what it is we want, what the key elements are in terms of being able to make that happen, move it forward. My guess is zoning will be one of them. But to be able to tell an attorney, we want an overlay district that allows these kind of uses downtown, that doesn't allow these kind of uses or encourages these, to find maybe incentives that the Town Meeting could approve for developers to come in and make it more worth their while to invest in some of these things that these renderings are showing here, for example. Do it in a more comprehensive way with all the various players at the table, because everybody's got to be participating. And as we all know, there are some boards that are elected that are not under direct control of the Board of Selectmen. There'll need to be key players in this. So I think coordination is a key element here as well, and that ultimately, yes, I think we do go to an attorney and say, you know, let's write something that then does what we think makes sense. So that seems to me to be the right direction, but maybe a preamble to that is a little more guidance to say, here's what we'd like you to do or not do.
So I still want to ask the question, but I think, and Sam's exactly right, and he's identified at least five key boards and committees that would be integral parts of this, and maybe a workshop amongst chairs, amongst the entire committees, whomever can come. I mean, sometimes it's hard, if you get 30 people in a room, to get anything done. But, you know, at least maybe you start with chairs of each board or committee, and you've already shown some ideas of what you think it could look like. Other boards and committees are encouraged to do the same, and then see where that comes out. But at least I still think we should get, you know, Town Council, this on his radar, to start getting some advice as to who could be utilized.
Sure.
And then clearly, you know, when the consensus hopefully is made, okay, great, let's go ahead and put pen to paper.
And I didn't list the Master Plan Committee, which is actually looking at a number of these things. As a matter of fact, that's one of the areas that Master Plan's looking at, so they need to be involved as well, I'd think.
I guess I have a slightly different view, and ultimately, you're going to have to have consensus across a wide swath. But, I mean, I've taken a look at the zoning. I'm not sure that it requires a massive overhaul. I mean, a decent amount, a decent job has been done on the downtown district in terms of the zoning. There's clearly some tweaking that has to be done. I think, in my view, a better first step would be to know what the alternatives are from a zoning perspective, and I suspect that's the sort of thing that the grant is geared towards. In other words, rather than, this is what we want, give it to us, what are our alternatives, and where are we in terms of the product we have right now? So, again, this is the attorney saying that sometimes it's best to go into an attorney first, but I think having some idea of what, is my impression the right one? Is the impression of some other people the right one, that we've got pretty good zoning framework already? You don't think so? All right. So, all right, we already disagreed.
I think we've seen with 2 East Main Street that there are some issues relative to current...
There's no question there are some issues. Yeah. I'm just not sure that there's the need to completely overhaul the downtown zoning. I think there's just some tweaking that needs to be done.
I do, I do agree, and actually, the way this started, and it kind of snowballed, is that there have been several recommendations over the course of a decade-plus to allow for mixed-use zoning, mixed use being defined colloquially as residential on top of some sort of retail restaurant on bottom, and that's actually not permitted by our current zoning law. And that was recommended in the master plan that was done in 2008, which is the current one that we're operating under. That was recommended, again, by the report that CHOPSE put together that was adopted by both the Planning Board and by the Board of Selectmen in 2015, or '17, 15?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. And that had a step-by-step planned roadmap, which gave timelines to do different pieces as far as downtown, including implementing mixed-use zoning to allow for residential and retail mixed use. And when we engaged the Urban Land Institute a year, a little over a year ago, to come in and give recommendations about how we get started on a downtown initiative, that was their primary number-one recommendation to us, was to allow for mixed-use zoning. It's kind of what is, what community building and economic development building is doing right now. It's a need from every perspective, from housing stock, housing stock diversity in town, to businesses in town who are struggling to get employees, because, you know, younger people don't want to commute out from the city. There's a transportation problem component with it, but, you know, a 25-year-old doesn't want to necessarily move to South Borough and spend $900,000 on a five-bedroom colonial. So, you know, having that diversity in housing stock helps our business community as well. And a lot of people are looking, both in the, on the younger spectrum and people who are downsizing and looking to stay local, for smaller, different types of housing, and for things like walkability and being able to walk down, grab a coffee, or walk to a parker. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of evidence, overwhelming evidence, I submit, that shows that this is critical to a healthy ecosystem for an economy, and we just don't allow it. And shortly after we began this process, the 2 Main Street property came up, and that was just exemplified exactly why this is a huge issue. And now, unfortunately, Mr. Bemis isn't pursuing mixed-use zoning and mixed-use development anymore, and he's doing office space, which I certainly don't blame him. That's how he can make the project work now, but he's not pursuing it because he was concerned that it was going to be held up, because mixed-use zoning is not permitted, and he cannot put residential within the letter of the law to his confidence, even though, even though he was advised that he could. He was concerned it was going to be held up. So I think that's the exact, exactly what we need. EDC went to the Planning Board and proposed that we tweak the current definition of mixed-use zoning to allow for residential use, and they explained to us that that, making that one-line change that we proposed wouldn't work, that it's much more complicated than that. And so that's when we started having discussions with them about, about an overlay district and different options that we can move forward on. I would have loved for it to be a one-line fix. We thought maybe it could be. We're not zoning experts, and Planning Board said no. So we're not going to, we're not going to fight with them on that. This is their wheelhouse, so we're going to do our best to work with them to come up with something that works for everyone and is more comprehensive.
Again, I mean, I definitely think the mixed-use idea is, you know, is an outstanding one. I mean, I could see getting up in the morning, going across to Moro's for breakfast, South Borough House of Pizza for lunch. I just need a pub at night. I'm outside.
And then you need a place during happy hour, right?
So I still would like to ask the question of Council, just to get this on his radar and start to get some advice.
I don't have issues with that as well, so.
I don't think we need a motion. Yeah.
So I think we have consensus on that. Mr. Wood?
Can I just clarify one thing before it starts a panic, that we want to put a sewer treatment plant downtown. The one we went to in Weston, as we explained to you when you came to our meeting, it's underground, and then it feeds into a hydroponic greenhouse that they have plants growing in. Other systems that are available are completely underground. So the one in Weston has a parking lot on it, so that would solve some of the space problems down there, and parking as well. So I just don't want people thinking it's going to be a big cook tank that's going to be down by their houses and stuff. And the one that we visited had no odor that I could smell, and so it's not going to be like this big Ross sewer treatment plant like downtown. It's underground, parking or a park or other things can be on top of it, which is really quite amazing that they did it in such a small space. So I just want to, in case anybody's watching on TV, I don't want to start a panic that we're putting a Ross.
Like a National Grid park could be?
Yeah. Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Grow tomatoes on it, too.
And it just, reminder for everybody, so September 25th, you've got a subcommittee meeting planned, correct?
Correct, yeah.
And planning forum late October.
Yes, we're still solidifying the date.
So these discussions will continue.
And one final thing, I, and it's serendipitous that we have appointments to the Cultural Arts Council.
Yes.
Because that is another one of the groups that I, it's one of my bugaboos. I highly recommend that you engage those folks as part of the process.
And I'm sorry I didn't mention that. We have had some... We have had some offline conversations. We have not had a formal conversation with them yet, but we have had some offline conversations. And absolutely, they are wonderful. They've given us incredible ideas. The other, just so I don't leave anyone out, and another integral piece to this, we met with, we met with Karen. She came to our, from DPW, she came to our meeting last week, because it's going to take a lot of collaboration as far, especially potentially for the septic, the sewage treatment piece of it. You know, we were looking at and thinking, gosh, we don't want, you know, brand-new, beautiful roads and sidewalks to be put down. And then we say, oh, we've got this great, you know, wastewater treatment plant, and we need it to go underground, so please dig up that road so you can hit the folks on the other side. So we want to make sure we're working collaboratively with her, and she was very supportive of us. We also talked about with her some of the beautification efforts for the piece of Main Street that's more the, not the piece they're working on now, but the one that's coming later, which is the one that, the Business Village District piece of it, and how we can, you know, ways we can start thinking about wide, you know, potentially widening sidewalks, making them a little nicer-looking to create more of a defined space for the downtown. So we're working with her as well, and she's been very helpful.
And there are some significant stormwater issues downtown as well that DPW and others will have to deal with.
Absolutely. Yep, that was a big piece of our conversation as well, very informative.
If I may put your, a bug in your ear on one related issue with regards to this, and thank you, Julie, for an excellent presentation. Dave McKay, 61 Presidential Drive, I'm a member of the EDC. I would welcome Aldo's participation and involvement in the zoning process, but in the event that we don't get the grant assistance, the place where this was, it would really be helpful to have some assistance in addressing the question that you raised, Marty, but also, you know, sort of how do we get from the pictures that the community likes to a zoning bylaw that works, recognizing we've got the existing zoning bylaw that we have to work within in some respects. I think the answer in, for that piece of the project, and they'll provide a ton of assistance in terms of the drafting as well, is one of the regional planning organizations. So you're talking about MRPC or CMRPC or something like that. And that's really, you know, I believe it was CMRPC that was participating in the ZAC process when they did that. So that's the kind of assistance that I think we're really going to need. Aldo will certainly be a key help to that, and far be it for me to say that lawyers are not always the answer. But on this kind of project, I think, I think we're just going to be a piece of the answer. So to the extent that, you know, we're thinking about alternatives and options in the event that we don't get the grant, it's, I think it's from one of the planning organizations that we're really going to need, that some assistance would be really helpful.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you, Julie.
All right. Next, Karen Galigan, DPW Superintendent, recommendations on Pine Hill Road improvements. Background, at our last meeting, we had a, the board had a discussion on some recommended improvements to assist with traffic and speed issues on Pine Hill Road. And we had sent Karen off to do some homework on a couple of items, and she's prepared a very concise memo on her recommendations. And Karen, if you could just highlight the recommendations that you're proposing for us from the work that you've done over the last couple of weeks?
Sure, that'd be great. So we did end up, we did get traffic counts Wednesday and Thursday, they do the counts. I don't have, I don't have the data back yet. Technically, I have it. I had it at 5:30, but it hasn't been analyzed yet. The, one thing that I do think we should do, and we talked about this last week, was change the thickly settled to be a 25 mile an hour zone throughout town. That does go through the legislative process, which means that town meeting has to vote that, but I don't see anybody going against that. But that would...
It's not anything that our town has adopted to date.
No. So we are, the default is 30 automatically, and so what, it's a new law that we can now do this on our own. It's part of that local law that came through.
And that's an initiative that, again, it needs to be town meeting action, it's not board action?
It seems so, that the board has to vote it, and then, and then I believe it says the legislative process, which I believe means town meeting.
Yeah, I think town meeting does have to approve it, that we start the process.
So with an open town meeting warrant, that's certainly something that we can consider including with it.
Yeah. So that was that little piece in the memo. So I do think we should do that. It makes a lot of sense, and it helps out. We have a lot of 25 mile an hour actual speed zones in town on the roads that are actually zoned. I think the driver feedback signs do seem to be helpful. If we can, I'd prefer to use actually roadway maintenance, because we did get an influx of that in July, so after town meeting, and we don't have to go through anywhere else, but that way we could use it for, to do the driver feedback signs. It's technically not road maintenance, that's the only reason why I want to get permission for it. Otherwise, paving, we don't normally need permission for. The pedestrian refuge areas, I just, after speaking with some people out there, it is one of those things, as people are walking, they need to sometimes go to the edge of the road, and there's really nowhere to go. So that's why we were talking about in spots where we can just, you know, obviously, if there's a stone wall, we can't, we can't pull down a shoulder. If there's a stone wall, it's going to topple on us or on anybody. But it's something that we can, we can provide some flat areas, we can dig out some of the random brush. We can't spray currently. But then that would give at least a little bit, especially the more narrow areas, which tends to be kind of up the hill going to Parmenter. Parmenter itself could use it on the, I think there's areas we could work that out on the Framingham side of the road. It's a little bit more populated over on the Marlboro side of the road. Center lines, I do think we should go with that. It does make sense, just the center line, but in order to give the police some authority for it, we'd go with a double based on the MUTCD. And that's, that's what I came up with as ideas.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question, Karen. So in our packet, you'd said that you do not recommend the fog line or the white line at the side of the road. And I guess I view those as serving two functions. One, yeah, for fog to help drivers stay on the road. But for me, at least, it seems to help separate cars versus any pedestrians going there. So in fact, it could be used, I would think, to keep cars sort of closer to the middle of the road to allow more room for pedestrians, even though that's a very limited space. So it seems to me that could be a very useful thing in terms of adding that fog line on the sides of the road there.
It can be, but we, that road does get down to, it's an 18-foot in several spaces or for long lengths. And the one problem with that is now you've made a nine-foot lane, of which six inches of it is actually, well, six inches of the center line and four inches is the fog line, and then there's nothing. So it's, it's not that it can't be done, but generally, people are averse to the, to the double yellow to begin with, or even a yellow. Adding a fog line, generally, people even get more upset, just because now it's, it seems more highway-ish. But whatever the town wants, we can get painted, that's not an issue.
Are there places on the road where that makes more sense and less sense? I'm just trying to think of it.
There are, there are wider areas down before, in that initial more flat stretch of Pine Hill, before you get into the wooded area. And that would be fine, but we do actually have a sidewalk in that section. So there's a, there's already a spot for the pedestrians to be walking. It's not a beautiful sidewalk by any stretch of imagination, but it is a sidewalk, so.
Karen, if, just walking through the things you want or are recommending, number one is a 25 mile an hour speed limit in congested areas. That's something we can, I guess, voice support for tonight, but it would have to be tied in with a vote at town meeting?
Correct.
Okay. The second thing is feedback signs?
Yes.
And you'd want us tonight to say that we are in support of using Chapter 90 funds for that?
Yes, or Chapter 90 is, I have plans for it, for the, for what we have currently, so I'd rather have you use road maintenance, if possible.
Okay. So one of those sources, with road maintenance being the number-one source?
Yes, please.
All right. The second, the third thing is pedestrian refuge areas along Pine Hill?
Yep.
Does that also require us to...
No, that, that's just something that we would do, that's something we can do to the shoulders without any permission.
As part of your normal road maintenance.
Right. Because it's right away.
And then the fourth thing, is that also, the center lines, is that also something?
So the center lines, just because it tends to be something that people don't like, I would love to have a vote on it.
Okay.
All right. And obviously, you just got the results in from the traffic study, and if there's any other recommendations that may fall from the results of analyzing of that data, you could follow up with that.
Absolutely.
Separate memo?
Yes.
Is there a possibility that that could do something like a three-way stop sign at the end? Is that where, why we're doing that count?
It's possible. That's one of the reasons why we were doing it, and we counted where we did. It's unlikely, based on what the standards have to be for that kind of warrant. It's 200 cars an hour for like an eight-hour stretch.
We'll see how the numbers play out.
Is there anything else that is pending as a result of the traffic count, or is it, is that the only one?
It would, it would be whether or not we could do that, and we were also counting the trucks in case there was a valid count, at least to look a little bit deeper into a truck exclusion.
Okay, thanks.
So I guess my, my response is, Karen, in two weeks, I think that's when you were here, I think it's terrific the turnaround you've done. I don't think it's going to solve the problems on Pine Hill Road, but I think it's a, it's a step in the right direction.
Yeah.
And I'm ready to make a motion to get you what you want, if there's not further discussion about it.
Should we hear from the residents who spoke last time to see if they support what we're talking about here?
Yeah. I will open it up in one second. Just one point. So you had gone through the four bullet items that you have. Actually, the first item, correct me if I'm wrong, with the adopting the state statute to allow us to go with a 25 mile an hour speed limit, that would apply to all, other town roads besides Pine Hill Road, correct?
Yes, it's, any, any thickly settled area in town, we would, we would be able to change to be 25.
Okay.
And I think there's actually signage you put at the entry to town.
To properly implement that, that's a board vote, followed up by endorsement of that by town meeting. So that's obviously, that's nothing that we're going to solve now. Quite honestly, I'd rather hold off on that and have that as a separate agenda item at another meeting, because it does impact other roads besides Pine Hill Road. I'd rather give that topic more notice and include it at an upcoming meeting, but I would like to move forward with two, three, and four on the list as you had read.
Can I ask about, clarifying question on that, does that require us to do 25 mile an hour on every sick, thickly settled road in town? Or do we still have the option of having different speed limits? It gives us the authority to do it if we choose, and the road is thickly settled? Or do we have to do it on every road that's thickly settled?
My understanding is, it's set that every thickly settled would be at 25.
So I agree with Mr. Shea. I'm supportive of all those initiatives. I'd rather have that one for a larger discussion, may impact other residents who may want to come speak to it.
That's my thought, is that there may be other people on other roads that would want to weigh in on this.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
But if there are residents who are not interested in us, us and moving forward with these things, I'd love to hear from them, too, before, you know, there's a motion.
So are there residents from the area that would like to comment? So Mr. Hamilton, rise first, so.
Al Hamilton, 35, Pine Hill Road. I want to thank Karen for her quick efforts and the board for taking the matter seriously. A couple of items. I did a windshield survey of the principal feeder roads, which either Pine Hill Road feeds or are fed to Pine Hill Road. And they pass through the towns of Sudbury, Framingham, and Marlboro. And without exception, all of them are marked double-yellow, and in many, in a number of cases, they also have the white fog line. So I think we are headed in the direction of being essentially consistent with that particular piece of road network. And so I, you know, I realize double-yellow lines are not everybody's cup of tea. They are mine, but I'm just wanting one vote. Secondly, I think, I get regularly exposed to the new Framingham 25 mile an hour speed limit, and it does appear to me that in the town of Framingham, while it's universal, and you know, there's a big sign right there on Route 30, almost, and Route 30 being described as thickly settled, very quickly, the speed limits go up to 40 miles an hour. So I, maybe, I think it would be useful, as you say, in understanding that the impact of that as to whether you can, by specific exception, have a faster speed on some road, even though it is thickly settled and nominally subject to the 25 miles an hour. So I think Karen has done a good job. I think the, I think there's a fair amount of support, at least in the neighborhood, for serious consideration of the three-way stop at Parmenter and Pine Hill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, everybody. Lisa Tominy, 105 Pine Hill Road. I will try to be brief, but I do have a handful of notes that are related to this ongoing dialogue. So for anyone who doesn't know, this process was started in 2015, and we had two petitions in the neighborhood as a result of a very serious car crash at the corner of Pine Hill and Parmenter Road. But that led to the bigger discussion of, we need both safety addresses, being addressed at the intersection of Pine Hill and Parmenter, as well as speed control. The two petitions that were submitted back in November of 2015 had 57 signatures for safety control at the intersection and 48 signatures on speed control over the length of Pine Hill and Parmenter. At that time, my husband, John Tominy, is a qualified firefighter in Southborough. He was also leading the charge. He got all the statistics in terms of how many accidents there have been, not just at the intersection, but on the length of both Pine Hill and Parmenter. And I know from the meeting on September 3rd, there was some follow-up going to be done with what, how many accidents were in the last one to two years. In 2015, when he had looked, there were 72 accidents over 12 years at that time. So just in terms of talking about speed control as well as safety at the intersection, I think those are important facts to consider. You also have to consider how many of us are using something like Waze or mapping apps. And so that has made Pine Hill and Parmenter much more known, right? 10 years ago, you wouldn't take a two-mile road into the woods unless you knew you were going to end up at Route 20 or Route 30, right? You'd get halfway through, and you'd be like, oh, turn around and go back. So those applications that drivers are using are exacerbating the problem. The fact of the matter is, the fire and police response time to this neck of the woods is still seven to 10 minutes, and the new station isn't going to substantially change that. It's a long time. There are no fire hydrants anywhere on Pine Hill Road. So Parmenter Road, the traffic going up and down, creates the problem of the safety issue of people coming up Pine Hill trying to turn right or left. When you come to the stop sign, any of you that have driven it, no, you cannot see. If you stop at the stoplight, you cannot see what's coming up from your left, you cannot see what's coming down from the right. You have to inch out until you get enough visibility to see to make a turn. So that is part and parcel, and I know, Karen, you have done so much work on this, and I'm sure it feels interminable, because this has been a long-running dialogue. But that issue in and of itself, nothing that I've heard yet addresses that. Eastleigh Farm, as was mentioned, I think by Sam in the last meeting, is looking at doing a 99-year lease with Commonwealth Farm 1761, building a $10 million marijuana cultivation and product manufacturing facility. They're going to have 100 full-time and part-time employees, according to what they've posted. And that will add to construction traffic, as well as eventually other traffic. Last December 4th, it was not snowy, the roads were dry. My son's bus, at 7:30 in the morning, picks him up, goes down to Metcalf, comes back down Pine Hill. I happened to be looking out when it was going down, the bus stopped. Up was coming a truck, big 18-wheeler. The bus couldn't get by, the 18-wheeler couldn't get by, and I watched, I have video, if anyone wants to see it, of the bus backing up Pine Hill Road to the intersection to let the truck try to squeak by. Last week, on Wednesday, the 11th, 7:30 in the morning, I was coming back from an Algonquin pickup, driving up Parmenter Road towards Pine Hill. In front of me was a sedan, and in front of them was a pickup truck. In front of me was a sedan, and in front of them was a pickup truck towing, you know, the, it's like an enclosed landscaper truck, big white box truck, you couldn't see around him. We get past Metcalf, we're doing 30 to 35, we're not going slow. The sedan decided 30 to 35 was too slow. He pulls out into oncoming traffic where he could not possibly see, goes up, passes, and cuts back in front of that truck just before Pine Hill Road. The fact that no one was killed is shocking to me, but those things happen all the time. Every person here can tell you that they're passed regularly, and the speed control, there is no speed control. So, in terms of follow-up, in 2015, when we met with this board, one of the things Bonnie Faniff had suggested, with the whole dialogue of how do you improve the intersection of safety? What else can be done? The homeowner at the time was not in favor of that stone wall being moved, and had hired an attorney to protect his interests. And Bonnie had suggested, and I don't remember what the outcome was, could we look at, you know, the other side of Parmenter Road? It's Callahan Park at that intersection. It's all state land. So, I remember her said, saying, can somebody work with Carolyn Dykema or somebody else to see, can we somehow get part of that land to help improve the safety of this? And I, I don't know, Karen, do you know if that ever moved forward? Or, or did that just, was it not something that could be investigated?
I don't remember it at all.
Okay. Fair enough. So, with all that as background, my requests, and I have five. One, I think Karen mentioned, which is trimming the weeds and the shrubs at the corner of Pine Hill and Parmenter. So, at least you have a chance of seeing something. Number two, the signage on the length of Parmenter and Pine Hill, much of the signage has been broken, is knocked over, you don't see where the curved things are. I think the stop sign at the corner, somebody hit it, and it's now like, what, six feet high? It's not above anything? So, but there's broken signage all in up and down, so I would like to see that fixed. Number three is an always stop. In the report in 2015 that the, the traffic consultants wrote, what they said was, there are criteria that the intersection meets for an always stop, and it meets these criteria. There are some other that it, that it doesn't meet. For this reason, we recommend you try all these other things first. Take out trees, move stone walls, regrade roadway, do all these other things. And if all of that doesn't work, then yes, consider an always stop. Which to me suggests that they weren't saying that it can't be done or it shouldn't be done, just that there are other things that you can do first. But those other things are significantly more costly than an always stop. Number four is that the dynamic feedback signs, the last presentation I heard said they would be looked at on Pine Hill, they also need to be on Parmenter Road. We still can't improve the safety of the intersection if the Parmenter traffic isn't slowed down. And then the fifth is what Karen had proposed, which is a yellow line the length of both Pine Hill and Parmenter. Getting to the end, I appreciate your patience. Other? Is there a question?
Nope.
Okay. Another suggestion, I had seen in the news that they're using these 3D painted crosswalks to help slow traffic. I don't know if that's an option to look at from Pine Hill to Parmenter to the Callahan property. It is a recreation property, people reasonably do walk up the street and cross. Maybe the visual of a 3D crosswalk would help slow people down, but what I don't know is would it create a real safety issue for somebody trying to cross, expecting traffic will stop at a crosswalk when they do anything but up there? And then, the truck exclusion discussion, I don't know if there's some component of historic preservation where the whole roadway is an old horse path turned into a roadway. There's stone walls that line both sides. I don't know if there's some component of historic preservation that helps move a truck exclusion forward, but I thought I would put that out there. And then, last but not least, Sam, to your point, Commonwealth Farm 1761, when they did a presentation to a butters in the neighborhood about what they were intending to put in at Eastleigh Farm, and how they were going to be good corporate citizens, there were both Southborough and Framingham residents there, and they were asked, you know, are you going to provide some funding to help mitigate things? They said that they would. They didn't say what, they didn't say how, but they certainly sounded like they would be open to it. That is the summary of my notes, I appreciate your time. And again, I know tons of people have put in loads of time on this. If anyone needs the slides or materials from what was done in 2015, really, much of it's very much the same. I'm happy to, to send that on. If anyone wants the drone footage of the intersection traffic, my son has a drone, and he's videoed it a few times, or the footage of the bus and the 18-wheeler doing the dance, when they couldn't get by, and there was no snow on the ground at that time. So, I, I go back to the beginning, which is, we need to address the safety at the intersection, and we need some way to do that. And I, I don't think that any of the measures that are going in place will do anything to help that. And then, we need speed control. Some people have talked about speed bumps, I am in favor of them, my husband is not. He has said, as a firefighter, if you're trying, our response time is already so far. If you have to slow down over every one of those speed bumps, that's not necessarily a first choice. Not, not that we couldn't necessarily get there, but in his view, in his experience, that's, and again, not speaking as a firefighter, not speaking on behalf of the town, but his experience, that wouldn't be his first choice. But I, I do think that it helps in some way, and I do think we need to do something, because there is a fatality at the corner of Parmenter and Broad Meadow a month or two ago. There's a fatality on Edmunds Road, when about five or six years ago, a man went to get his mail from the mailbox on a Friday afternoon. So, we know it's a matter of if, not when, unless we do some of these things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Shea, can we get answers to some of those questions from Ms. Galligan? As to if she's able to do those things that were just suggested, save the truck exclusion matter? Is, is that's not something, I think that, we talked about that, we're not going to move forward at this point on that, as well as the, waiting for the results of the, you know, to ascertain whether or not an always stop is, can be done. But I'd like to know, can all of those other things be done?
Yep.
As far as Callahan State Park, we can definitely look into that. We can see how that, that works. We can revisit the idea of doing the geometric changes at that intersection that were at one point suggested in the 2015 or after that report, when we had a plan made. We can revisit that, that's fairly costly for us, just, we'd have to allocate money to do that. And we can, we can definitely put a driver feedback sign on Parmenter Road, that's easy enough.
All right, so let me just go through the notes as I wrote them, and if I messed up, please, please correct me. I'm sure folks will. First I wrote down was just continued trimming of weeds, bushes, shrubs?
Yep.
Along that area, if that's something that we can have folks do.
Yes, and we'll be able to spray next year, so that'll make it better, but we can cut.
Some of these you don't need as a motion, right?
Right, no, we don't need any kind of motion.
That's number one.
That we can do as part of providing the driver refuge areas?
Yes.
We had talked about earlier. Signage on Pine Hill and Parmer, Parmenter that may be broken that needs repairs?
Yeah, we can definitely fix that. Actually, if anyone wants to email me the ones they know of, that, if they're missing, missing. I mean, if something's broken, we should be able to see it when we go out. But if there's something missing, just email me, let me know.
Okay, I'm going to come back to the always stop, but the dynamic, dynamic feedback signs, your memo identifies at least two, potentially two others on Parmenter, two on Pine Hill, potentially two others on Parmenter. I personally would be in favor of all four.
Same here.
Actually, I think I was doing, I was trying to do two each way on Pine Hill, because it's so long, and then two, one each, one entering the town on each side would be the two additional, if we did that, so we would end up being six, yeah.
All right, I then misread that, then, I apologize.
Not to inundate people with glowing signs, so I do apologize for that, but it, it is helpful.
So, a total of four, Pine Hill, two, Parmenter, one on each side of that intersection?
Yeah, entering, entering town.
And those are just six signs, I mean, in, in other words, if it turns out that you don't need four on Parmenter, they can be used on Deerfoot?
Um, they are electronic, so we could technically move them, yes.
But I mean, they're not, okay.
Yeah, no, they're permanent, they are permanent.
Okay.
Next, the 3D painted sidewalk or painted crosswalk area?
So, we, we don't put crosswalks where, and I, this is actually, Ms. Tominey kind of, sort of said this, that without, without sidewalks, people don't anticipate a crosswalk. And so, what happens is, is people think a crosswalk is a great thing to use, and they just, they use it, but the driving public's not anticipating it, because they don't see sidewalks. So, they're not necessarily anticipating pedestrians. I mean, you can put pedestrian signs up and stuff, and it does sort of help, but without a sidewalk, a crosswalk isn't actually bringing anyone from a location to a clear location. So, it's, it's sort of like the always stop. If, if it's not warranted, it's a, it's a, it's actually more of a problem for, because you've got that driver who's crazy enough to go and pass another car on Pine Hill Road or Parmenter. Are they really gonna, are they gonna stop at a crosswalk regardless of what they're seeing?
I guess if you had the lit sign, you know, on either side of the crosswalk, would that be an option?
Well, it's, you, you can, but all the people, there's a lot of lit signs there at that point. But not only that, you have, again, it's only, I guess you could flash it if someone got to the crosswalk, that kind of thing, like the warning signs. We have a lot of requests for those, so we should have some sort of a standard if we're going to do something like that. And we, and we don't. And again, we don't even have them on roads where we have sidewalks, so that's, that's one of the reasons why. And it's, really, when you drive on Pine Hill and Parmenter, I, I do think it's, it's something that people don't anticipate seeing pedestrians, and unfortunately, it's, we have the same issue on Flag Road. It's, it's an issue where the pedestrian actually has to be the more cautious, because the driver isn't anticipating seeing one. Because there's, and it's, it's kind of terrible to say, but it's just, it, that's because of the way driving works. Everything's based on what you anticipate. So, it's actually, when, once you provide a sidewalk, people expect to see a pedestrian, and the pedestrians actually have a spot to be, that they're not, they're sharing the road, but they're not sharing the, the actual lane with. And that, that tends to be what the problems get to be.
And then, the last one that I skipped over was the always stop, which I think we touched upon a little bit with the traffic study and getting the results from the most recent traffic study.
Yes.
Certainly not, I'll just speak for myself, but I don't know that I'm ready to, to vote that tonight, but I'm certainly, I want to see the results of the most recent traffic study data, because we had talked about at our last meeting here, the timing that the data was taken previously. Sounds like the, the days that they were taken most recently are more indicative of school traffic, commuting traffic. I'd be curious to see what that data shows, and if that data supports the three-way stop to enhance safety there, then I certainly would be all in, I would be in favor of that personally. Hang on, you need to speak at a microphone if you're going to.
When are you going to receive the results?
Um, I just, I-
You have them, but you haven't been-
Right, they, they just came this afternoon.
And so, maybe on our next agenda, next meeting, could we put that as an agenda item to review that and?
Well, let's, I'll, why don't I send you the analysis of what it says before we have a, necessarily schedule something in?
Brian, given that we're heading towards spending some money, should we reach out to the marijuana company to say, you're costing us money, we'd like some mitigation support for this?
I certainly don't have a problem looking for additional money. A lot of what we're discussing are existing problems now. Obviously, the potential for those to be made worse by future traffic, I think you'd-
Is Mark the one to reach out? I don't know how that process works.
So, I'm not sure where they are in their permitting with Framingham at this point, whether that, Framingham's, I believe, has approved at the local level. So, now it'll go back to the state, to the Cannabis Control Commission, to do their diligence, to do diligence. So, the conversation may be better served at the state level at this point, because it may be out of Framingham's hands.
Yeah, I, I don't know, but again, it seems to me that it's possible that we could miss the vote if we delay too long, so having that, raising the question could be useful.
And I think the comment was made at the last meeting, that there was a, either commitment by them or requirement by Framingham that all construction traffic only be, only utilize Framingham?
I, I had heard that anecdotally, I don't know that for a fact, but if they, if that's the case, we certainly ought to follow up, I would think.
I would certainly agree with that as well.
Maybe the planning can reach out to planning and find out exactly what's been done.
Are there board comments, questions?
No, I mean, I think making, waiting for the results of the traffic study makes sense. The other stuff that you've recommended that tie into the, the comments we've already heard, but you were also at the microphone, so maybe before we, there, there may yet be a fifth or sixth item that we add on.
No, Caroline Rossen, 89 Pine Hill Road. I was just going to, really, I was going to sort of more or less say what Lisa's already said, but I'm curious about the three-way stop thing. Because if the, the report from 2015 said, you know, try these things first, and if they don't work, you know, then we would, we would have a three-way, we would advise a three, no, not advise, we would-
Then it's warranted.
Yeah, warranted a three-way stop. So, these other, these other ways to sort of try and keep the safety under control at the intersection of Pine Hill and, and Parmenter, they haven't worked. So, you know, what is the thing about the three-way stop? Is it just extremely expensive to have installed, or what?
I don't think it's a matter of cost.
No, I, I, I'm sensing strong support for it. I think the, just the prudent thing to do for this situation, as well as any other that come before this, this board, is to ensure that we've had an opportunity to analyze the data.
Exactly.
The data supports it, yes, we move forward. That's why I was even suggesting we do it at our next meeting. So, I don't think the, the delay, if any, would, is going to be long. But, I mean, I'm sensing that the data's going to come back, that it warrants it. We're able to have that data as part of our argument to say, yes, you know, we, we are supportive of it, let's do it.
I thought there were state requirements for a stop sign, that we had to meet certain traffic counts.
There might be as well. Yeah, there are, yeah, there are state requirements for that. So, if the data doesn't, you know, doesn't meet the warrant to do it, then you're not simply allowed to do it even though you want to, but the data, so the data's got to support the implementation of it. And Karen would have to, you know, speak to the, you know, the traffic requirements for that. But, but, you know, Sam, Sam is right, that, you know, if the data supports it, the board has the option to do it.
But we're not there yet.
Yeah. Again, we've made the commitment to invest in that additional study to get that data, so.
Right, well, thank you.
The daters just come in, let's just take the additional couple of weeks, month that we need to properly analyze it, and then we'll take the next step on, on that decision.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, it's Mr. Rossen.
Name is Neil Rossen, 89 Pine Hill Road. We have incident file suit against, against the 1761 outfit. So, we should see what the result of that suit is. We have a number of objections to that, to what they're doing, and so we put that there, and so the suit has itself stopped the project for now, because it has to be heard.
Okay.
So, just a matter of information.
Understood, thank you. Again, I think a lot of what we've discussed here is to resolve issues that exist currently that could only be made worse by that potential project. So, I think we ought to still move forward with what we've discussed. Lisa?
I'm reading from the report from the MDM consultants in 2015. It is the opinion of MDM that an always stop control is not desirable nor strongly supported at the intersection of Parmenter and Pine Hill, given low traffic volumes, inability to first try other remedial measures as outlined under recommendations, which are specifically designed to reduce travel speeds, reduce vehicular conflicts, enhance intersection visibility, and enhance sightlines. Should this set of remedial features, measures fail to enhance visibility and safety, then an always stop may be considered. That was what they said to us. I think four years later, we are pretty clear that we haven't made much progress on the safety or the speed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
There was a while ago.
No, I forgot what it was.
All right, tell me- All right, tell me if I missed something. I, I think, where's Karen, Karen? That we're still back at the, the two things that you need or would like us to at least consider moving and supporting are the, the.
Feedback signs.
The six now, feedback signs.
Yes.
All right, that's number one.
And the center line, the double sign.
And the center line, so those are the two things.
That's all I need.
Other than that, they fall within your authority, you're, and you're, you are committed to taking care of those.
Yes.
Through the DPW.
Yes.
So moved?
Second.
Are you gonna disagree with me, Mark?
No, I'm not disagreeing with you, I just would like to ask Ms. Gallagher, the cost of the driver feedback signs, if we're purchasing six of them and using road construction money to do it? Just so you understand the cost, excuse me?
About forty-eight thousand.
Total.
For all six.
Forty-eight thousand dollars for six signs, I just want you to understand that. And remind me the road construction money for the year?
Three twenty-five this year.
Right, okay. So we allocated three twenty-five, we're gonna spend forty-eight thousand on the, on the driver feedback signs.
You have enough to do other things you need to do with road maintenance, monies that you would have left over, that you're projected to do.
Is there ever enough money? It's, it, I, I do believe that, that this is a, a good use of that money.
Second.
Move seconded, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're done, we're, town administrators report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, two, two very quick items for you. I wanted to make sure the board was aware, the Mass Municipal Association is having their fall legislative breakfast meetings over the next couple of weeks. The one in our area is September twenty-seventh in Marlborough. Meetings are held at eight in the morning, they usually make them, you know, quick hits, you're in by eight, you're out by ten. Normally, you have MMA staff, legislators, and people from various municipalities in the region, just coming in, getting an understanding of what's on the deck for, for the coming legislative session, what some of the items are that, you know, cities and towns may be aware of, and also for cities and towns to put things on the table at the, you know, that, that you'd like MMA to, you know, to consider pursuing, you know, to help cities and towns. Also legislators are in the room, they hear the same things at the same time. So if you are interested in participating on the twenty-seventh or attending on the twenty-seventh, if you can just let me know, there's no cost, but they do like to have a head count, so, you know, they provide a little bit of breakfast, they just wanna make sure they know who's coming.
And Mark, again, the location?
February twenty-seventh in Marlborough, it's at the Jericho Lodge on Brigham Street.
Okay, thanks.
And if you want to shoot me an email and that, I can write, I can get everybody.
September twenty-seventh.
September twenty-seventh, I can get everyone, you know, signed up and, and take care of that for you, so if you want, just let me know. The only other item I just want to make the board aware of is the, the golf reconstruction work that's been going on. If you've had a chance to take a drive by the golf course, you will see just off to the side of the, of clubhouse, where there was scrub brush and some trees, there is now two new tee boxes for the first hole. There is a, a beautiful new wall that was constructed, that looks like it's been there. And also, a little further on, there was an elevated ninth green with, with three pot bunkers in front of it. The architect seemed to challenge the notion of going for it in two. So it's a real risk reward. I just bring this up just because we are coming to the end of that project, believe it or not, fourth bid, and this has really been a winner for us. Golf Committee is very pleased with the work that's been done. Work should be wrapping up this week, early next week, and then the architect will be back to do a walkthrough for punch list items. There is going to be additional money left in the article, there's some additional things that Golf Committee would like to see in terms of some fencing and things of that nature. Also, before the property became public safety, it was just golf, at the end of the day, when golf was done for the day, the gates would be locked, they would open in the morning, they'd close at the end of the season, just to provide a sense of security for the course and reduce the liability. We'd also like to put the gate back on the golf road for the same purpose, so that people can't just drive in and go into the property whenever, whenever the property is closed. Again, the management company does have some liability for the operation, you know, during the season. So Golf Committee is gonna look to meet with CPC and do an amended application to include these items. Again, it's within the funding, you know, we did pretty well with this project and everything and that, so I wanted to let you know, not a, as big of a success story as public safety, but a success story nonetheless. I think we've already set the table for next season, being, you know, really great with all the new improvements, plus AsaBET is making some great headway over there in terms of the, the new deck and the siding. So if you get a chance, you can stop by and see what's going on.
Anecdotally, it looks like in the last couple of weeks that the volume has really picked up over there. Do we, do we get any sort of reports on what the?
We do.
What the usage is?
We do.
And is my anecdotal observation correct or incorrect?
So I did not look at the last report that just came in, but we do get monthly reports, the number of rounds, revenues and everything and that, so we can provide tracking. Brian Ballantyne, you know, keeps those for the records.
Could you distribute that? That'd be interesting.
So, absolutely, sure.
Again, I, I, I walk over there a lot, and it just seems like there's been a real uptick.
Yeah, when, when the weather's been good, that parking lot seems to be pretty full.
Is the town making money or losing money on the course at this point?
The way the contract is constructed, the management company is responsible for all expenses, and this season, if you recall, the board, you know, did waive any, any payments from the management company back to the town, with the understanding that, you know, there's been some offsets with the construction going on, you know, with their neighbor, public safety, and, and the impacts that those may have, you know, on the operation. We've been very good. I think Jason mentioned tonight, you know, there's only been one day we've had to close that course, you know, which essentially was for paving, so.
Right, at some point, I think we should let, I, I want to know, and I trust the public will, will want to know, is that a money maker for the town? Do we break even, or are we every year gonna be losing money?
So you are not losing money? I think, you know, I think you can say right now it's break even, so long as the management company, the management company isn't coming back and saying, you know, we can't cover our expenses, we're gonna need the town to help pony up here. I think when the season opens next March, Dan, and you have now got, you know, an access, you've got a parking area, you've got a newly sided and roofed clubhouse with a new deck, and egress down, stairs down, a new first tee box, a new ninth green, you've got a fully formed course again. I think that's gonna be the proof of whether or not you've got an operation here that's gonna be sustainable, or actually be, you know, money coming back to the town. But again, the money that comes back to the town from the contract goes into a revolving fund specifically to be spent on golf. So you, you, any money that would come back to you is earmarked to be put back into the course to continue to make it profitable.
Good. And when are we expecting the John Wilson Drive signage?
So that is something, I won't ask Ms. Gallagher, I won't ask Ms. Gallagher to get back up again, that's something that we were hoping to have end of this month, beginning of next month, so that's something.
Nice before the winter, and when, maybe when the course is still open.
I can guarantee you that is going to be in and installed before the winter, and, you know, it, it is, it would be a real problem if we didn't have that installed before the season's over.
Right, 'cause that's something I'd like to widely, first of all, to the family, make sure that they're aware, and then, secondly, I wanna make sure that, that is widely, that date is, whenever we're gonna do that, is widely disseminated.
We would, we would ensure that whatever date is selected is done with, done with the family's blessing, so that it doesn't make sense to make a dedication like that.
That's right.
And not have the people who are most affected by that be present.
Of course, yeah, but, and then, okay, you, you know where I'm coming from.
Yep.
Thank you.
I got it.
Anything else?
No, no, I think, like I said, I think, you know, I appreciate the accolades that the committee received tonight, I think the committee's done a great job with this public, in terms of the public safety facility.
Yep.
I know I've spent more time with Jason than I've spent with my wife, you know, in the past fifteen, eighteen months, but, you know, you look at that product down there, and, you know, it's, it's been time well spent.
Okay. The only thing that I'll note is, I made reference to it earlier, we had an excellent event earlier today at the senior center. We had the secretary from the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs in town, we had the commissioner on the Department of Energy, we had a number of other dignitaries from the state as well as part of that Green Communities Grant Program, representatives from roughly fifty cities and towns as well, so. Good showing by, by the Town of Southboro, and I'll, we're very appreciative that we, that we hosted the event today. Member reports?
Nothing for me.
Same.
I got a quick update following our conversation at our last meeting. I actually did pursue the appointment to the MWRA Advisory Board Executive Committee, and last Friday, I was appointed to that committee. The, for those who don't know, MWRA, sixty-one communities, they provide water and sewer service or water both, Southboro buys water through the MWRA, over three million people supported, and the advisory committee serves much like the Southboro Financial Advisory Committee in terms of acting as a check and balance on the, the management of MWRA. There are several members of the advisory committee who are on the MWRA board, and interesting current pressure is Massport has, the advisory committee believes, come up with a fairly unreasonable eight million dollar charge, that they're trying to get the MWRA to pay for and pass through to the rate payers, and we are in the process of pushing back on that, not clear what's gonna happen, but that's the kind of thing that the advisory board does, and I'm very interested in the opportunity to participate, so I appreciate the board's support with that. Thank you.
So our, our, our motion last week was not in vain. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Onto consent, excuse me, onto consent agenda, we've covered items D, E, and F. Are any other requested holds on the other items on the consent agenda?
I have a question about I two, I Romanet two, the Chestnut Hill Farm dinner.
Why don't we hold I? Any other questions, comments? I will move then that we approve items A, B, C, G, H, and J from the consent agenda.
Second.
Move seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Mr. Stivers?
Question on the Chestnut Hill Farm, is this, the, these dinners that are now scheduled to, as a result, they're rescheduling relative to the triple E issue? Because I remember that they, they had some events that they had rescheduled based, for the triple E, and it seemed to me that, that charging them again for the license fee that they'd already paid for the first time is not the right way to go, and if that's what we're doing, I have a concern about that, or these different events somehow, or did, have we already charged them twice for those events that they rescheduled? Because I think this is the kind of thing that we ought to be doing and encouraging, and not making it harder for people to do this, and they ought to be praised for rescheduling and continuing the process there, because I think that's a great event.
So I can't speak with any certainty as to the rescheduling of some of these. This has been, I, I think if you look back at your, at the agenda, Sam, that, you know, we've had a number of these dinners that have been, that you've given approval for for one-day licenses.
Right.
I think only a small percentage of them have been held. There were, the staff has spent a tremendous amount of time on this. A lot of the requests came in, you know, let's say, less than timely, last minute. We've tried to make accommodations for certain things. I think, you know, the fees were not paid upfront, fees are paid after the fact. If, say, you approved, I believe there was probably seven or eight dinners.
Right.
That you approved or one-day licenses, and then after the fact, it was like, well, we only really are gonna use four of those, so we're only gonna pay for four of them. It's created a lot of time and work. So the application fees were clarified that, you know, you need to pay upfront for these licenses. We had a similar event for, I believe it was RX Advance. They scheduled an event, they didn't end up holding it, they had paid for it, and they said, you know what, we never, we never used it, we're gonna apply again for, for another event, you know, and it's here, and there was, there was another fee that was paid.
I'm less compelled if somebody decides on their own to cancel an event or whatever, I think that risk is on them. But in fact, if, if these folks have changed an event based on the triple E alert and the town's instruction that we don't want to have events held in the evening hours, then it seems to me we should not be charging them for that particular cancellation.
Well, I wouldn't say it's instruction, I would say it's, you know, here's, you know, for, we, we issued what we're doing for our properties.
Right.
Okay, that we control, so we don't control Chestnut Hill.
Correct.
You know, that, that is not held by the town.
Yeah.
You know, so there is some advice, there are things that, you know, we get some notices that, you know, well, the golf course, they were, people still out on the course at seven o'clock.
True, absolutely.
That's, you know, that's something that we, you know, that's gonna be a choice the management company has to make, so.
I, I don't wanna spend a lot of time on this, but my theory is.
No, you know, I understand, but we need, if, if the board wants to do something like that, then, you know, if we want to allow people to pay for licenses, you know, and then if they decide not to use them, that we're gonna carry those fees forward, then I think we need to apply that to everyone uniformly.
And that's the part, again, and I'm sympathetic to, to the concern that they have and to the issue they have, and certainly understand and respect that they did want to cancel the two events that they had because of the triple E threat. But it, it's just being able to give a consistent answer to, to all applicants, and we're just gonna wind up with, I mean, a host of reasons why people are coming, in my opinion, you know. So I just think that we need to be consistent, I don't like having to say no. At the end of the day, it's, again, any money for a nonprofit institution is important, it's not a ten thousand dollar permit fee that we're talking, it's.
Yep, I understand. Well, again, I'm all for consistency, but with a little flexibility, so I just wanted to make the point, so I'm ready to move on. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve A, B, C, cons.
Just I.
Just I.
Oh, that's right, we've already done those, just I. So consent item, I, subsections one and two.
Second. Move seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, any other matters before the board?
Just one alibi for me, I forgot to mention, there was a burial memorial service for Pete DePina at the Royal Cemetery. He was very well-known in town and was very active, he's a veteran, very active in the Buffalo Soldiers. He was a name and a face that many recognized and have interacted with over the years. I was proud to be part of a color guard with a, a number of our other veterans to honor him as he was laid to rest, and the active duty component came and did an incredibly impressive job of providing honors to him as well. So I just want to, my apologies for not mentioning that in a earlier member's report, but I wanna make sure that Pete was recognized.
Thank you, Dan. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.